The League of Women Voters was founded almost 100 years ago with the right to vote for women. Not only the right to vote, but an informed vote.
You need to know everything about that candidate. You need to be able to ask that candidate questions.
I think that the organization is going to continue to attract a diverse membership, and I think that that will help us in working toward the goal of better representation for everybody.
There's a wonderful opportunity here for people who are younger to come and learn from women who have been part of social movements for years and years.
It's our job to be a mentor to the newer members because they're the ones, after all, that are going to be carrying the banner of the League into the next 100 years. We stand for the nonpartisanship that we should all have as leaders in our democracy today.
Sklo Library is proud to be centrally located in downtown State College, but parking in our popular location is at a premium. To maximize easy, free parking for library patrons, Sklo Library has installed a new parking system. Four easy steps will provide library patrons with a low-stress parking experience. One, enter the Sklo Library parking lot and take a ticket. Bring your ticket into the library with you as you will need to validate it a few minutes before you leave the building. Two, spend as much time in the library as you would like. When you are ready to leave, remember that your vehicle must leave with you. Three, a few minutes before leaving the building, validate your parking ticket. There is one validation station located in the lobby. Scan the QR code, listen for one beep, remove the ticket, and wait for the thank you screen. Once a parking ticket is validated, it must be used to leave the parking lot within 20 minutes. Four, scan your validated ticket at the parking lot exit. We hope you enjoyed your visit to the library, and we'll see you again soon. We're all in this together, so never panic. Library staff are here to help with any questions, issues, or concerns you might have.
You're watching CNET, Center County's government and educational access network.
Go ahead and call to order the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting for Tuesday, October 15th, if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we'll go to the manager for announcements and a roll call.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to members of the board, staff, and the public for joining us this evening for the October 15th regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually and in person here in the main meeting room. If you are in attendance virtually using the WebEx platform and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the chairwoman calls on you. If you are attending in person with us in the main meeting room and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please address the board at the podium and state your name and municipality of residence and the topic you wish to speak on. Prior to commencing the meeting, I have just a few short procedural items to cover. First, members of the public attending using the WebEx platform are asked to remain muted during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the chair, they may unmute their microphone for their question or comment. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. And finally, a roll call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear, interact, using the WebEx meeting platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Patterson?
Here.
Mr. Heller?
Here.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
All right, thank you, and I'll announce at this time that we had an executive session on October 2nd regarding personnel.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to make a change to the agenda, just to move an item. I would like to move the item under Item 1, Under Unfinished Business, to just after the consent agenda, so Item 2, Under New Business.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, so discussion then. So that would be to move Item Number 1 from Unfinished Business to become Item Number 2, Under New Business.
Yes, ma'am.
And the rest will move down. Okay. Okay, any other discussion on that?
The tip about the allocation of funds to tip.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, questions on that, we take a vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to make a note of that, but you can also remind me when we get to that item.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, we'll move to public input. This is a time for anyone with comments on any item not on tonight's agenda to speak for about up to five minutes on that item. And if there is anybody, please make your way to the podium. Yep, and just give us your name and township of residence.
Good evening. My name is Laura Dinini, and I reside in Ferguson Township. I return this evening to follow up on several items that I introduced at public comment time in the past. One thing I wanted to draw everyone's attention to is since the last time I spoke here, and I'm going to try to stay within five minutes, I might just go a minute or two over. This is important if others have not seen the Spotlight PA article entitled, Troubled Rural Water Company Could Be Forced to Sell Pending PA Utility Commission Investigation. I'll just read a few passages. In a recent filing, the Bureau cited Rock Springs' history of regulatory violations in an ongoing legal battle with the Department of Environmental Protection over excessive water loss. The Bureau also noted the company's continued failure to fix issues and pay tens of thousands of dollars in civil penalties. An investigation to determine whether the commission should order another utility to acquire Rock Springs is in the public interest, Carrie Wright, deputy chief prosecutor, wrote in the Bureau's petition. You're all well aware of the issues with Rock Springs Water Company and what I've been subjected to since my appearance on the Spotlight PA panel in July. Currently, I wanted to advise you of the situation on Beaver Branch Road. For several months now, there have been two open pits down to our utility lines. I sent you some pictures of them. One of the pits, the one on my property in your right-of-way, now has fiberglass insulation over top of the water pipe, and then two pieces of plywood, like this, like that, not providing a flat surface. Now, I'm not well-educated in the use of fiberglass insulation outdoors in weather situations, but I suspect it's not the recommended material. And that is what is currently being promoted as the solution for our utility pipes, our water pipes, not freezing. And today, we are under a frost notice. So I did file a complaint today with the D.P., and, you know, I'll continue to do these kinds of things as they struggle to enforce a 2006 consent decree on the Rock Springs Water Company. Now, the latest action, you know, is the 2024 Order to Enforce, but this seems like it stretches out in both directions on the timeline to eternity, really. And just to contextualize my fear a bit, the previous owner of my next-door neighbor in the house, the previous owner there, had been served their house water through a garden hose for months. And when November rolled around, they finally filed, I believe it was with the PUC, to have that situation rectified. So these are the kinds of things that the customers of Rock Springs deal with all the time. Now, I want to take a quick lateral move to the COG budget because the water situation is related to the low fire coverage rating in West Ferguson, but so is the structure of the COG and your relationship with the COG. And as it stands right now, the dialogue that I'm hearing is, y'all are fine with the money and the revenue, and everything is all good. But what I've been saying for years is there's a lot of costs creeping up on us that we don't typically talk about in a holistic way. And that is concerning because the West End's fire service is struggling because of it. I realize I'm going over time a bit, but I appreciate that because this is a very, very important issue. So I'm going to read two more passages. One is from the memorandum after the church meeting at Fairbrook Church after we had learned our hydrants didn't work. And that is just the brief passage I've read to you before. Township Regional Fire Personnel stated that the Rock Springs Water Company fire hydrants provide virtually no fire protection due to low flow and undersized mains. And this was in 2014. Ferguson Township discontinued assessing hydrant tax charges several years ago for this reason. The Township Fire Commissioner, the regional fire director, stated that this area of Ferguson Township has a low fire rating. A system of tankers is planned for fire emergencies in western Ferguson Township. If I understand correctly the information that I received today, there have been no additional tankers added since that time, although there has been additional gallon capacity added. I could get into a lot about how we have a volunteer fire system. There's a separation between the COG and the municipalities, and various other conditions kind of create this. And you all are responsible for a vast majority of rectifying this. Now, in the past, the way I approached this was through trying to show an imbalance in the COG budget and the necessity of it for this township. And I was really not well-liked for that. And so I understand why you're not really enthusiastic about approaching this. But this is going to be my last thing that I read, okay? So this is from the Ferguson Township document that the taxpayers paid for and sits on a shelf at my house. I read it a lot. It's in 2023, it's super recent. And this is Chapter 4, and I'm looking at Table 4-7. And this table relates solely to Ferguson Township assets, so it does not include the regional park assets, okay? So there's surplus rating, deficiency rating, okay? So I'm going to hit just four of them. Baseball field surplus, 2.6; softball, .06; surplus football, minus .2.4; soccer fields, 1.6 surplus; multipurpose fields, 3.6 surplus; basketball courts, 1.9 surplus. Every other amenity is in deficit, and that's without the regional parks. So if you added the regional parks into there, you'd have many, many, many more of those field amenities and still not a lot of the other things you're in deficit about. So I really, really, really want to encourage you all to take a holistic perspective and try to educate the other municipal members of COG why it's really to their advantage to try to understand the situation that each of us as municipalities are in, respect that when they're making budgetary requests. And of you all, I really want to encourage you to reconsider your position in terms of your involvement with parks. And this is not because we don't like parks. This is not because we don't value our relationship with COG. It's because all of those documents are extremely outdated. That committee was a farce. It got nothing done. Nothing has changed when you've tried to play nicely. And look what happened when Half Moon pulled out of the library. It was like, let's arrange the entire COG budget around them to try to coax them back in. I'm going to wrap up by saying, let me really encourage you to look at these kinds of pieces of information in an integrated whole, and please take action. People in the executive committee, when they decide what is going to be discussed at the COG, they have a different agenda, and that can shoot this down, and has. I'll send you some documentation from 2016 when I tried to raise this issue. Please, please consider these things in a holistic manner.
Thank you. All right, others for public input for items not on this evening's agenda, please just provide your name and township of residence.
Ronald S. Gilligan, Ferguson Township. I've been involved with Rock Springs Water Company for 54 years of my living, and they provide a good water to our farm, our cattle, and our neighbors. And if there's some holes in the ground and some insulation not covering and trying to do some things, it would be wise of Mr. Campbell to fill in some holes. But after listening to Ms. Dinini, I'm so thankful she's not on the board anymore. And also, there might be a good reason why Mr. Campbell hasn't filled some holes in around her home. That's all I have to say. But I think Rock Springs has done a very good job for us, and I don't really... I also talked to some folks that are more involved with the company as far as working at the company. And I don't think a lot of that report is completely accurate as far as all the leakage and things that are being claimed. Thank you.
Thank you. There are some empty seats? Up in these front couple of rows, if anybody standing would like to sit in those.
We have four chairs, Madam Chair, and we're getting more chairs right now to bring up here so everyone can have a chance to sit.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Two up front.
Six, two, four.
Right. Yeah, there's two in the front row. Okay, and if there is any other...
There are six chairs, two here, two there, two there. Six chairs, and more on the way.
More on the way. Thank you. Thanks to Todd and Detective Lewis James for bringing this up. All right, we'll give them just a minute. It's fantastic. This is a great problem to have. I'll note.
So CNET on...
We're good. Okay, we have enough chairs. We have enough chairs for folks to sit if they'd like.
YouTube is muted.
Hmm, okay. Do you have text entries?
YouTube is muted? YouTube is muted?
Okay. All right, I want to thank everyone for helping to set up those extra chairs. Again, if there is public comment for any items not on this evening's agenda, please make your way up to the podium and provide your name and township of residence. Okay, I am not seeing any other... Is there public input for items not on this evening's agenda?
I can't hear you.
I can't hear you say anything.
If there is public comment on items that are not appearing on this evening's agenda, or anything that's not on the agenda, if you have comment on that, you may make your way to the podium. Okay, and we do have additional chairs up front here for anybody standing, so please help yourself to those. All right, sorry. All right, we'll move to the approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes. This is from October 4th. Were there any changes or corrections to that set of minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Mrs. Omari, so moved.
This is Patrick, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no.
Apologies, one moment. It has October 4th, not October 1st.
In the attachment, it is the first.
It is the first. I'm going to say for tonight's agenda, it notes the fourth, but it's the first.
Yes, yeah, it's accurate in the agenda, yeah. Very good. Okay. So we will move to Authorities, Boards, and Commissions reports. Up first is the Park and Recreation Authority report. Is Mr. Gracie Griffin in attendance? I'm not seeing him online. Okay, so we'll move on to the Sklo Library report with Patricia Bass. If you want to come forward, and your report was attached. If you want to highlight anything from that, that'd be great.
It's always a pleasure to bring you the quarterly report based on the quarterly press keys for Sklo Library as well. Since this is the 20th anniversary of celebrating the current Sklo building, I thought I would add a little bit to what you got in the mail in terms of the materials, just in contributions and the impact of the library in general to the committee as a community as a whole. Here are some statistics, not too many, but just some ones that I think you'll be pleased to hear. In the total calendar year of 2023, more than 22,000 people attended over 750 events at Sklo Library. Over 200,000 people visited Sklo in 2023. Sklo Library partnered with more than 65 community organizations, providing outreach and presentations. Technology provided, community tech help, equipment checkouts, and over 1 million views to the website at Sklo Library for information. And finally, there are a lot of zeros in these numbers. In the materials, over 175,000 materials circulated over 700,000 times in 2023. So I think that just goes to reinforce the dedication we have in this community to a public library with a lot of availability for all residents of this particular area. Moving on to the report specifically for our township and the report that you received with that material. Our usage in Ferguson Township from January to the end of September, our residents checked out 109,567 physical items. And once again, the checkout rates for our Ferguson Township residents were the highest in COG, being a little bit over 30% of all items checked out. And our residents continue, I think, to appreciate the remote drop-offs. About 26,000-plus items have been dropped off at the Giant at Northland Center as well as the one in Pine Grove Mills. So those services, again, continue to be used. Just four quick, brief highlights that were provided in your materials, from the summer especially. The We Love Lego Club was an elementary student activity, and every week on Tuesday afternoon, or Tuesday morning, students came in or were given a prompt, elementary-age students, to inspire their creativity, and then a set of logo blocks. And each of those little projects was photographed in a Hall of Fame for Lego projects was created and part of the children's center. The really good news about this is not just that the children had a wonderful learning experience, but they liked it so much, they asked for more. So the library is now doing a fall session on Saturday afternoons for students once a month as well. Secondly, for the teens and adult patrons of the library, the summer reading program, this is not just Ferguson Township. 316 teens participated in a program overall, and the culminating event of that was a Nerf Olympics, where a good time was had by all 22 of the teens that participated. The adults also, the 450 adults who participated, of those, 24 of them had a culminating event that was a murder mystery dinner party where staff and volunteers dressed up and acted out the scenarios. And then the participants had the fun of following the clues and trying to figure out who did what and solve the mystery by the end. And thirdly, our Ferguson Township Municipal Mixer, Sklo, staff members Paula Bannon and Kim Patty attended that and provided information on bicycle-themed books and also activities, and had a chance then to provide our residents with information about falls, programming, and things that they might have an interest in participating in. And finally, and the fourth, if you've had a chance to be downtown, the new library mural has added another aspect to entering the library on the ramps that go into the building as well. Thanks to a partnership with Three Dots Downtown, artist Margalo Guo designed a mural that transforms the parking lot into a realm of fantasy, inviting people to think about adventure and exploration as they enter Sklo Library. That's been our theme for the past year or so. The artwork features a dragon and a phoenix on either side, very brightly colored. Represents the energy and exploration patrons exhibit when they're visiting the library as well. Already, we've noticed people doing selfies and taking photos with friends outside the library. And I did want to remind people that on October 18th, this Friday, there is an upcoming community event where patrons could have a chance to make their mark and add to this. So Margalo's work is on the interior of the ramp. Patrons will be able to add stenciled feathers, stars, and sparkles on the exterior part of the ramp to add to the fun of having that part there. That concludes the material that you received. This is hot off the presses. Lisa, our library director, just sent this out to us this afternoon. We were very pleased to announce that the 2024 Best Practices Award in the infant-toddler category, given by the Pennsylvania Library Association, including libraries all across the state, has been awarded to our Children's Services Department for a program called Baby Sensory Crawl Playdate. For those of you who don't know about this, I'll tell you three sentences to describe it, and I think you'll see right away why this program won a state award. The Baby Sensory Crawl Playdate is designed for babies' birth to 14 months and their caregivers. During the playdate, babies are encouraged to crawl and explore various textures on a large mat that was designed and constructed by a local quilting group. The mat is specifically geared to stimulate the baby's senses and cognitive skills such as object permanence, spatial awareness, and problem solving. And additionally, there are other special activities that the babies can take advantage of as well. So congratulations go to our Children's Services Department, specifically Elaine Bailey, who conceived this particular idea, and one of the staff members who brought her quilting group into the project, Melinda Hovington. So her quilting group actually created this mat that then was awarded us as well. So on that very good news, that concludes our report. And thank you so much for your continuing support.
Thank you so much for that. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations on that award. That is fantastic. And I think through my involvement with COG and everything, it is amazing to me how much of a community space the library is for all the uses there throughout that are available to the public and everything. Well done. I also want to say, though, I'll add on to the report and maybe make a public service announcement, and please correct me if I'm wrong here. But for folks that don't know, the surface lot at the library is available for public parking, you have to pay, at 6:01 p.m. in the evening. And that money goes to the library. So if you'd like supporting the library, park at the surface lot. Just a little bit of a PSA. I thought that was a great opportunity, again, to show our support for the library.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks very much, and congratulations. That's very exciting. That's a really neat achievement. And thanks to Lisa for coming tonight as well. All right, under Special Reports and Acknowledgements, we have noted all of our diversity, equity, and inclusionary activities for this month on the calendar. And we'll move to COG and Regional Committee Reports. Under COG Committee Reports, HR Committee was canceled very briefly on Land Use and Community Infrastructure Committee. You can see in the agenda, we did an exercise for the Comprehensive Plan Update on just kind of trying to pull out some general themes on that, and then did an exercise on one of them about strengths and challenges, opportunities for kind of getting some different objectives and goals around that put into the plan. So if you want to actually watch us walk through that, I'd encourage you to watch the recording on COG. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. And we'll move on to Climate Action and Sustainability Committee.
Okay, so the Climate Action and Sustainability Committee, we just... Okay, so the Climate Action Sustainability Committee, we just met yesterday. I've got to get the formal report over. Couple, three highlights, or three items that I wanted to highlight. First was related to the Municipal Solid Waste Ordinance, where it's actually going to be moving to General Forum is the next step. But it's been updated to cover the new contractor, as well as, you know, general updates that had to be made to it. It is recommended that municipalities will need their own ordinances related to this. So we'll have some more future conversations once this goes through General Forum and there's a bigger awareness on that. The other thing that we discussed too is the door fee waiver for age-related safety concerns. And this is with our new hauler coming in, an opportunity where folks, what we talked about, this was just discussion, is how do we go ahead and accommodate folks that may have a need for door service? Be it because of age or physical abilities, et cetera. So what we were discussing is the idea of having it related to, you know, having, we'll say, a doctor sign off or say, yes, there is a medical need, why this has to be done, et cetera. But also moving away from the age-related concerns there, because we have age-restricted communities, which essentially would mean that everybody in that age-restricted community would have door service, which would be, would be an impact, again, to the money and everything that we're spending to have services collected. So the hauler is kind of concerned about that. Anyway, that was just the discussion topic. We'll anticipate something more formal in the upcoming weeks or months to, again, formalize that. And then finally, was the bulk waste collection changes. And really, this is kind of the last pickup as we know it. What we're all familiar with, with bulk pickup, is changing with our new hauler starting next year. So we anticipate that change. I'm happy to answer any questions related to these things to the best of my abilities. I'll say that.
All right, questions for Matt on that? All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and we'll go to Manager's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Provided with my, provided with the agenda is some informational follow-up material for the board's consideration. And I'll just note that beginning October 9th through the 13th, I attended with members of the board, the Pennsylvania Municipal Leadership Summit, where there were priorities that focused on community, infrastructure, public safety. And it was a great training program. And that concludes my report.
All right, questions for the manager? It was a good conference.
Yes.
Yes, anything? All right. The Planning and Zoning Department report was included. Anything to highlight from Christina?
Just a note on the totals, like year-to-date totals on the zoning permits and violations, complaints. That's as of May, when we started reporting and gathering all this information for the board.
Great.
It's not really year-to-date.
Thank you. All right, building those reports up. So that's, that's an important update, so thank you. All right, questions for Christina?
Because we didn't have data prior to May, or it was on paper?
We just weren't tracking it and keeping track of it. So a violation would come in, it'd be addressed, and then settled.
Throw the paper in the trash.
Well.
We initiated our new tracking and monitoring program in May, so our data only goes back to May.
In that system.
In the report, in that system, that is correct, yeah.
And then, just curious, are we still at zero, zero construction, new construction, and even to today?
There's a few random, single-family homes, but, because I did go back, those I did go back to the beginning of the year. In our zoning permits, there's a few, but no subdivisions or anything like that, that would, like, no new fox points.
Copy that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Other questions for Christina? Seeing none. Public Works Director's Report, I believe that's Mr. Modricar, yep, there he is. Anything to highlight?
Good evening. The only thing I would highlight is we're having bi-weekly progress meetings with Sklo Fiber, a Chantel subsidiary. And I did ask the question today regarding a map of the area that they plan to serve. And the answer was all of Ferguson Township, urbanized area and rural area. As permits are processed and released, you know, we'll make information available as to what geographic area they're moving into. But their planning is that the build-out will be over the next two, two and a half years. So that's all I wanted to call to your attention.
All right, thank you for that. Any questions for Mr. Modricar? Yes.
So number five in your report, I was just curious, you're managing the permitting phase, it says, of the Beaver Branch PRP Improvement Project. Is, and you have to remind me, is that an MS4 project that's getting MS4 credit?
Yes, that is our MS4 PRP Pollution Reduction Plan Project. KCI is the consultant, and the stormwater engineer is, you know, working with them as they work their way through the permitting process with construction planned for spring, summer of next year.
Copy that. And does that project kind of round out our five years of the existing permit?
It will, yes. Completion of this project, as well as the acquiring of credits for the Duck Pond, would complete our requirements for our five-year permit cycle. The next cycle that starts mid-next year, we do not yet have any guidance.
Copy that, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, there's no other questions on that? We also have the Police Department Report, if there's anything the manager wanted to highlight from that, or if there's any questions.
It's a really comprehensive report. Happy to answer any questions or follow-up with the answers the board may have questions on.
Thanks, any questions? Going once? Okay, all right. Okay, we'll move to unfinished business. As a reminder, we moved number one to new business, so we will move to number two. A public hearing on an ordinance of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, repealing Chapter 1 Administration and Government, Part 14, Stormwater Utility Fee. And we'll go to the manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Provided with the agenda is a narrative, a pretty comprehensive narrative, that kind of summarizes how we got to this point, beginning with discussions at the regular meeting held by the Board of Supervisors that began actually earlier than August 20th. But we started identifying a timeline that would bring us to this point in time, following a majority vote held at the last meeting, which now brought to the Board of Supervisors is a resolution for consideration by the board to take action this evening to officially repeal the Stormwater Utility Fee Ordinance. Happy to answer any questions as the board continues discussion. This is a resolution which will require a public hearing.
All right, thank you. As stated by the manager, this is a public hearing, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing for comments on this item. Seeing that we have a large number of attendees, we'll probably try to keep public comment at about three minutes.
Chairman, I can hear very well when someone's on the TV. Very hard to hear any comments from you folks. And it was like at the last meeting, I was too lost. I wonder if there's something you can do to have your audience, there are these speakers, but it's not coming through at all.
Yeah, I'll briefly address that. And the comment was that it is difficult to hear in the back of the room. We're aware of that and are working to improve that. There are additional chairs up at the front of the room, if anyone would care to move forward. And, but again, if anyone has comments during this public hearing, I'd invite you to come up to the podium, state your name and township of residence, and we'll try to keep comments at about three minutes to five minutes perhaps. So yes, please make your way to the podium.
That's stormwater, so I'm good.
Yes, you're on, you're on topic. This is the public hearing on the fee. So yes, please just provide us your name and township of residence, thank you.
I'm Maria Brizzi. I'm sure all of you know me by now. One, I'd like to apologize to the board and to our wonderful citizens. I was campaigning all day and got caught in the rain, so I'm not dressed appropriately for a meeting of disrespect. But I am here and I wanted to be here. I've been a resident of Ferguson Township for over 25 years. I've had three successful businesses here in this township. And I have to applaud the people that voted to repeal this. This is, this, there is no equity in this stormwater bill. Our farmers are impacted tremendously. Our commercial developers and our businesses are impacted tremendously. And in this environment, economic environment, it is imperative that we try to do everything we can to help small businesses and developers, real estate, commercial, whichever, and our citizens to help in these economic times, which are daunting. My, after having businesses and they've all been super successful, I started out with nothing. I realized that fiscal responsibility is the biggest thing you can do. And there may be areas we can cut taxes, cut expenses to eliminate this tax. I know that it would behoove you to do that, because it has been such a horrible, people are just super upset about this. And we happen to be, I think, if I'm not mistaken, the only township that has this tax. And of course, there's also the additional cost of maintaining this tax and monitoring the tax. So all that combined, I am just in awe that we're having this meeting tonight, because we applauded, it was the right move to repeal this tax. So hopefully, those of you who are arguing against this can understand where developers, farmers, small businesses, your citizens are coming from, that absolutely have a very difficult time paying this tax. It's just one more thing they have to pay. And I think we can do, as I said, be fiscal responsible in many areas and cut things that are in the budget to bring the budget under control, that we can then have to implement an income that can take this tax off the books. So thank you so much for having this hearing tonight. I hope you all vote the way you did before, and we get at least one more person that will continue to vote to repeal this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment for the public hearing on this item? Please make your way up to the podium and provide your name and township of residence, thank you.
My name is Tom Songer, I'm with the Torn Group. On behalf of the property owners of Ferguson Township, I want to thank the supervisors for their willingness to give property owners the opportunity to give their input on the Ferguson Stormwater Township Fee. The, you've had numerous meetings on this, going back to September 3rd, September 11th, September 17th, and October 1st. Anyone who was for or against the stormwater fee, in my opinion, had ample opportunity to come out and talk to you about their concerns. We know that the township is financially challenged to meet the MS4 requirements. Many others, along with myself, believe that the township should do a thorough review of your budget, with the hopes that you could find savings to meet the MS4 requirements within the current revenue stream that you have. If the township needs additional revenue for MS4 projects or anything else, then the fairest and easiest way to generate additional revenue is simply by increasing your real estate tax. As you know, Ferguson Township has the lowest real estate tax in the center region by far. And real estate taxes are assessed based on property value. Therefore, no matter whether you're a residential property or a commercial property, you're going to pay a fair tax based on your assessment. So the more valuable your property is, the more tax you're going to pay. And a part of that tax will go towards addressing your stormwater needs. In addition, other municipalities in the center region do not have a stormwater fee. And they're managing to meet their MS4 requirements within their own revenue streams. You heard from your consultant on October 1st that the Stormwater Fee Ordinance is very complex. In addition, the ordinance is difficult and costly to administer. It's not free. Takes people to administer the ordinance, to hear applications, to have fees lowered, et cetera. Your manager recommended that the ordinance should be repealed on October 1st. As you know, many people have spoken to you about repealing the ordinance. And it's time for you to make the final decision on this matter. On October 1st, the meeting, it was mentioned that you had received more than 70 emails, most of which encouraged you to repeal the ordinance. I personally have sent out more than 75 emails to residential and non-residential property owners that I know of who live and have businesses in Ferguson Township. I didn't get one response from anyone who said they were not in favor of this Stormwater Fee Ordinance being repealed. With respect to the Stormwater Fee, I personally believe that the supervisors should serve the will of property owners of Ferguson Township. No matter what you might personally believe about this ordinance, I think you owe it to all property owners to vote the will and the majority of what people want you to do. And in this case, I don't think there's any question that the majority of the people in Ferguson Township want to see this ordinance repealed. And I would encourage you to do so. On October 1st, three of you voted to repeal the ordinance. Two of you voted not to repeal the ordinance. I would encourage all of you to vote to repeal this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, if there are others with public comments for the public hearing, please make your way up to the podium. And please provide your name and township of residence, thank you.
John Simbeck, Ferguson Township. I've been a resident here since 1978. I've been a small business owner in State College since 1983. I watched in horror as you people put together this ordinance over the years. When this first started before COVID, finding out information about this ordinance was almost impossible. It took email after email after phone call to try and find out when the meetings were, where the minutes of it were, who was involved in it. It's as though we had, as Mr. Songer said, we had somebody's personal agenda wanting to push this fee forward. And I think that's kind of what happened. The will of the people was not served at all here. And as a long-term resident, I was shocked that it would really follow through like this. The implementation of it has been poor. We already have a stream buffer ordinance that affects properties like mine, that when I moved into my property, I was hoping in my retirement I could add to my property and have home things that I wanted. Now if I want to add to my property, I have to move, because they passed something, didn't put a grand person clause in it, and it just got slapped on everybody. We take this, add to the rent tax, as the joke is called with it. And I think a very poor job and poor service to the citizens has been done. I really hope you guys reconsider this. I think doing it by real estate, if we need more revenue, that's fair to everyone. This fee does not impact everyone equally. That is discrimination. You should be very careful. If they go forward and don't do this, you may end up with legal problems. And then the taxpayers pay for that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others with public comments?
Ronald S. Gilligan, Ferguson Township. Just to go along with what the last two gentlemen said, I've been here my whole life as well. And I don't think there's a lot of people filling this room tonight with their checkbooks, ready to start writing checks out to support this. I think the majority are here tonight to see it repealed. And it really stuck in my craw the last meeting, when one of the supervisors just said, well, everybody should pay their fair share. Well, that's how Canada works and gas is $6.50 a gallon. And that's just socialism, and that's how things get to be. That's where things are headed. And I just don't think it's right. And everyone's right that we're all here tonight to see that things are done for the citizens, not just because this is what should be done. We all do pay our fair share. Every hurricane that hits, our insurance goes up, the taxes go up. It's just, when I started in business 31 years ago, you could save some money. Now you don't save any money. Now you don't save any money. And I have, I do all right, but it's not the way it used to be in 1990, 1995, 1920. It's just not the way it used to be. And it just, it just gets sucked out of us every time you turn around. There's something else you're paying for. And then this doesn't even affect half of us. And it just doesn't affect half of us. That's what I don't understand. If you want to, if you want to go around these developments where the stormwater goes and everybody wants to pay their fair share that lives in development, feel free. That's not fair to Gayle and Drogomus, it's not fair to Tom Songer. They own a lot of property and they pay a heck of a lot of tax. And they are supporting the township. And to penalize them even more doesn't make any sense. And I hear about their houses being built or their permits being granted. Well, I've talked to developers and they won't touch this township the 10-foot pole just because of all the regulations and the zoning and the problems. And it just goes, it just goes on and on and on. And I'm done. It's just, I appreciate your time. And one last thing I wanted to say was, just the three of you that voted to repeal this, I don't want to use the word shocked, but I was thrilled. I just, it was just nice to see three people with a backbone to stand up to something like this, to do the right thing. And I was just terribly pleased and that's been, thank you.
All right. Any other public comment for the public hearing? Please make your way up to the podium. And please provide your name and township of residence.
Certainly. My name is Rick Tetslaw. I've been a township resident of Ferguson for 31 years. I'm also the past president of the Tax Review Board for the township for over a decade and I'm currently on the Park and Recs Board. So I do pay attention. I too would like to thank those who have voted to at least bring this back up and possibly repeal it. I would like to encourage you all to repeal this. While this was going on, I was on the HOA at Aaron Village. And I argued against it then and argue against it now that actually this is a regressive tax for anyone who is on fixed income, which is pretty much all the retirees in our township. But it also is a double tax on anyone who is part of an HOA where each township or each townhouse is charged the same as a single-family dwelling under the EU. But then the homeowners association is charged again for the same property. So I'm really confused as to how that's actually fair. Your own report tonight shows that there's very little development applied or going on in the township. Why is that? At one time, this township was one of the lowest taxed townships in the area. It had one of the most efficient municipally-run organizations in the area. And I can't say that that's the case anymore. So again, I would strongly, strongly encourage every one of you to repeal this and put it back as a line item in our budget where it can be controlled and where it is taxed fairly so that those who are on fixed income are not paying more than their fair share and that we can start to see development to bring new sources of revenue into this township. Thank you.
Thank you. Others for public comment? Please come, thank you, yeah, please come on up and just provide your name and township of residence.
My name is Darren Barker. I've been a resident Ferguson Township for basically my whole life. Yeah, I really do want to express appreciation to the three of you who voted in favor of repealing this. I know the majority of you weren't here when this was first put on the table and was first passed. Maybe you followed it, we followed it very closely. Essentially, it started out as a fee and there was enough people in the farming business, the local community, who had expressed concern and said we got exemptions, we got credits, we got all these things to kind of appease everybody. That's how it's gotten so complex. Now, could we erase all that, get rid of it, make it simple? Then you're back to where you were. Everybody opposes it completely and you've got a whole new headache to deal with. So I discourage you from thinking that it's quick and easy to solve this by erasing exemptions and the credits. That just puts you back to where you were in 2020 when this thing was not going to get passed. On the other side of the equation, it's become so inefficient and I thank Centrist for basically pointing out what we tried to point out for years. And that is, to make this thing work is an accounting nightmare. To be able to assign the income to the right expenses just becomes a matter of moving numbers around. I've been an accountant for most of my life and we're basically playing games. It's gotten harder each year that we've done this to follow the township's financials because you're trying to figure out how 25% of this salary got moved into this fund so that you could use these funds to be able to help cover portions of payroll. So it's become very difficult for residents to follow the financials as a result. I think it's equally difficult for you, and maybe this is why you've been supportive of the repeal, to really come up with a solid budget where you can say, this is what the cost is. Because if we limited it, we don't get rid of the township engineer and the 25% that we assigned to the fund. We still have him and 100% of his salary. It makes the accounting for you guys very complicated. It makes decision-making very complicated. It makes it very hard for us to understand really what's going on. So I really do encourage the three of you to stand your ground and the other two of you to reconsider. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, others for public comment? Please make your way up to the podium and provide us your name and township of residence.
My name is John Bensany. I'm proud to say that I've been here 50 years in my house in Ferguson Township. I've had the privilege of being a township supervisor over 35 years ago, sitting in your seat. When I, when that ordinance started, I was astounded. Unfortunately, I had many issues, was maybe not in town or what, but it passed. I considered that a windfall tax. You have a manager, you have an engineer. And I have to say that in all the years that I've been in Ferguson Township and associated with State College since 1967, stormwater management has always been first. This tax is not necessary. You have good people who are managing. And I hope that you've considered this and also get rid of that ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others for public comments? Please make your way up to the podium.
Richard Killian, 25-year resident of Ferguson Township. I have 25 years of experience in governmental accounting with, within county governments. I just want to make sure you understand the financial impacts. And I encourage you to consult with your auditor and financial professionals. A fee is not a tax. It's, it must reflect the actual costs for the services provided or for the impact that it mitigates because you're not a nonprofit. The advantage of this, of establishing the current process is it allowed you to transfer obligations off of your books of the general fund to a separate fund, both liabilities, obligations, and costs. Repelling the fee would weaken your balance sheet and add pressure on tax revenues. Using your audited financial statements and your 2024 adopted budget, let's do the math if the fee was repealed. Your estimated annual stormwater cost is 2.4 million. That's conservatively estimated because your 2024 budget is 3.8 million. Your annual real estate tax is 1.3 million. That's, that's what you're, basically your 2023 results were. Therefore, your stormwater fee is almost double of what your tax revenue is. Therefore, your property taxes, because this is a fee, it's not a tax. It's shifting a fee to the tax side, your property taxes are going to double. I don't think you should, you should make this decision until you fully measure the impact and, and come up with a solid, statable plan and how to replace the lost revenue. Because this is an annual thing. One point, it's almost $1.2 million where the cost exceed income one year, next year, or five years. It's five, $6 million. Otherwise, our property taxes are going to double. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others for public comment? Please just provide us your name and township of residence.
Hi, my name is Elliot Killian. I'm a Ferguson Township resident. So there's a lot of different topics that were talked about tonight. I want to address a couple of them. First of all, I want to say I want the best thing for the township. I think a lot of people in this room want the best thing for the township. Some of the things that were talked about was equity. The thing with being a use, oh, sorry, the thing with being a fee is that it is payment for a, something that you're getting it from. So like trash collection, right? You have a trash collection fee. You don't, we don't pay taxes through our trash collection, right? Someone brought up the thought that it could be, or fear that we're going into a socialist society. It would be if we pay our trash collections through a tax. That would be exactly what we'd be doing here by repealing this fee. Where we, we would be shifting it from the people that are using stormwater into everybody paying for it. That sounds like a socialist system. Okay. But also, we have a legal, the township has a legal responsibility and a legal requirement for these stormwater projects. And if they did not, if they neglected their legal responsibility, there would likely be lawsuits. I was on the board many years ago when the regional was sued by an entity because of a stormwater incident. Likely those scenarios would increase if there was neglect on the stormwater side. While the township is the only one in the, in the region to have this type of fee, this is a tool that is, that any municipality in the state can use and likely many municipalities in the state do use this fee. Again, I want the best thing for the township. The history of this was, this was an innovative tool that the state gave municipalities to allow us to collect this fee just for stormwater because they recognized that stormwater was a huge infrastructure requirement and that needed, that more infrastructure was needed to be built. In conclusion, I suggest that you postpone it. I'm not arguing that you don't do it, but postpone it because you need more financial data, as we've just heard. It would double your property taxes. And I don't think a lot of residents want that. And that you should take, many people said you should take the interest of the residents. I completely agree that government is at the will of the citizens. But I don't know if everyone in this room is completely reflective of everyone in the township. And so you should gauge that. I could be completely wrong. So again, I suggest that you postpone this until you get more financial data, get more input from residents on this potential doubling of property tax. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If there's other public comment, please make your way up to the podium and just provide us your name and township of residence.
Hi, my name's Joy Vincent Killian, 1319 Harris Street. Almost 25 years, I'm in Ferguson. My husband and son, both township supervisors. My husband also CFO of the county and has been accountant his whole life. I just wanted to note, I thought it was very interesting the number of people that were concerned that they couldn't afford $10 a month. $119 a year is less than $10 a month. And I feel like the rush, the giddy up and go to get this processed under two months. I remember the stormwater discussions in the past and we had notices that came to our neighborhoods. They arrived, we were aware of them. And it's been pretty fast in a month and a half. If we're talking about, as someone said at the beginning of September and here we are only midway through October. And a fee is better for use than a tax that shifts the burden onto the 66% of the budget that our homeowners and taxpayers.
Thank you. If there's other public comment, please make your way up to the podium. And please just provide us your name and township of residence.
I'm Gary Moyer. I've lived in Ferguson Township for the last 60 years. My wife, Deerfield Drive, for the last 50. My wife and I are fortunate enough to own three properties in the township, our residence, and two properties here in Cato Park. I thank you for asking for the input. I'm 80 years old, so nobody ever asks for my input, or at least it's rare. When the developers developed our community on Deerfield Drive, they were required to handle stormwater according to the laws at that time. They billed us as property owners. It became part of the purchase price of the lots and became part of the value when we put a house on the lot. So it's an appraised or mandated value that is now taxed and has been taxed for the last 50 years. Same thing when we developed two different lots here in Cato, we were required to have retention bonds, which we've maintained all this time. That expense became part of the tax base of those properties. So every year, it's part of the calculation of what the tax should be. This stormwater thing is, from my standpoint, is virtually unmanageable and hardly fair. If the township has obligations that they need to meet, in other words, if you need more money, then let's look at the, the real estate, the tax values because that is the tried and true fairest system that we've got to fall back on. I thank you very much for requesting the input. I hope that helps a little bit. Let's do it the other way.
Thank you. All right, if there's other public comment for the public hearing, please make your way up to the podium.
Hello, folks. I'm Dan Barker. I spoke at the last meeting on this very topic. I'm, I'm a little concerned if some of the information some folks think they know about this. I've been following this whole train of events now for five years. And there's such a thing as an MS4 requirement, which the government mandates, which is maybe, I'll say it's a six-figure item. The other things that we're talking about should be prudently taken care of in the Transportation Department funding from the township. And what's happened in this whole stormwater thing is that's all been collapsed together. So the dollars we're talking about here that would rightly come from one department have been shuffled to another department and all is now under stormwater. And the requirements that the government has imposed on all the townships in Pennsylvania and so forth and the MS4 requirements are very minor compared to the money that we're talking about. These folks are talking about doubling taxes and so forth. That's just not correct. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there's other public comment, please make your way up to the podium. Other public comment for the public hearing? Not seeing any in the room? If there's any online, I'm not seeing any hands raised online. I'll give it one more opportunity here in the room if anyone wants to make public comment. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And I'll go ahead and ask for a motion.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I may, I move that the Board of Supervisors repeal Chapter 1, Part 14, Stormwater Utility Fee in its entirety.
All right, is there a second? No. Is there a second?
I will second that.
All right, discussion and we can start?
No, as you can tell, my adrenaline's up, you know, even reading a short sentence like that because I think I'm anxious to get this done. And hopefully we can go ahead and give taxpayers some relief. And now we can, after this vote, if it does go the way that the last vote did, that we can sharpen the pencils and take a hard look at how we are budgeted in the township and find creative ways to solve for stormwater. So my only comments, thank you.
Madam Chair, a few prepared
Madam Chair, a few prepared remarks I have. I think by repealing this, we are going to be able to reallocate staffing resources back to focus on our MS4 permit requirements, necessary maintenance improvements on stormwater infrastructure going forward, that alleviating our staff from any extraneous tasks resulting from the current ordinance. I believe the repeal will give the township greater flexibility of revenue and planning of stormwater projects. Current ordinance restricts that revenue to only stormwater projects and staff while setting a level of service that presets specific stormwater projects and expenditures by default per the ordinance. Considering the historical amount of funding that's been available for infrastructure and climate mitigation resiliency, I would encourage township to explore those opportunities as well as any all available options to address for the lost revenue.
All right, thank you. Patty, any discussion, comments?
Just that I, my issue with this has always been that it's not perfect, but none of our, there are many things that aren't in terms of our ordinances, et cetera. And I feel that there is no concrete plan. And in these uncertainties, I don't think that we're going to do, sharpen our pencils and do enough belt tightening to make up for the lost revenue. We may have a short-term fix, but I know that stormwater fees, our stormwater projects are just going to become increasingly expensive. Again, there's no plan, and so to cut off a revenue source with absolutely no plan just seems like a failure to plan, which just seems like a bad idea. Anyway, those are my comments, and I really, when you talk about being creative, that's what the stormwater fee was, a creative way to share the responsibility, the burden across all things, across the different populations we have here in Ferguson Township. So I still think that there are ways to fix it, but repealing it in its entirety at this particular time is, is not what I'm in favor of. And will also say that about the will of the people, I also listened to, nobody's jazzed about increased taxes or having to pay fees unnecessarily, but I do feel like we do have stormwater issues, water mitigation issues, pollutants, and where water's going, that sort of thing. And sometimes I also listen to the voices that aren't in the room, and that's where I stand.
Thank you. And Omari?
Well, the engagement over the last few months has been a really refreshing, for me, opportunity to get kind of the community involved in a thing that we all care about and are, you know, it's a thing that I knocked a lot of doors and heard about. Many voices have spoken, and as Patty said, there are many that aren't in this room that have spoken. I understand there are differing opinions on this. I believe it's critical that we take time to fully evaluate all the perspectives. I think, and let me back up. I started this in May of this year. I got this on the agenda. So I agree with everything that's been said here, for the most part, that there's some inequities here. There's some dollars, there's some shuffling, there's some, where's the money coming from? Where's it going? And so that's what I've learned over this period of time, and I want to make the best decision for all residents and business owners. That said, there is no right answer here. Let me repeat, there is no right answer here. Why do I say that? Because as Mrs. Killian, Vincent Killian said earlier, it's $119 for some people. But it's, for some businesses, it's $8,000. That's a big difference. But there are some bills that still have to get paid. And so, all right, well, how about a quarter mil? And I'll just, my property taxes are $3,000 a year. Well, a quarter mil on top of that would be $360 on my taxes. So I go from $119 to $360. Oh, different numbers? Well, I'm sorry. Whereas that commercial property, $8,000, would go from $8,000 in fees to $860 in fees or in taxes. Those are two different ways to do this. And so this body, I'm here now, I've been here six months, been there long enough that I own it now. This body, four years ago, chose a path, and I don't agree that that was the right path. But I'm not sure I like this path either. That other path, the complexity of it, the complexity of it, the inequity in it is because of exemptions and kind of arbitrary chopping numbers, and it's just humans. It's humans trying and doing their best. So I would just heed Mr. Killian's warning with this kind of potential change. Again, this is not the path that I want. I think there are a number of ways we could have gone, but this is what this body chose to do. And whatever it is, this body will work to fix the problems created by whatever we come out with today. That's all I got.
Thank you. I just want to thank the public for the continued participation and engagement the last six weeks on this. We've heard from many residents, many even center-region residents, and it's very encouraging to see so many people come to a meeting, to speak, to really be involved in these different topics. And I just hope that that continues on a number of different things that we talk about here. So again, just thank you for paying attention, for participating. It was not lost on any of us how much, how much thought was, was put into this from the residents. So appreciate that. I'm very appreciative of the opportunity to review this fee ordinance at this time, having had it in place for a couple of years, and to get recommendations from our stamp program consultant and the manager over this time. And I think the timing of this review is helpful as well, knowing that just next week we'll be starting our budget discussion. So I think knowing where the board is on this, I think is helpful for staff to be able to put together a good budget for us to review next week. So if there's no other discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a roll call vote for Ordinance 1103. Ms. Stevens?
No.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The ordinance passes with majority vote.
Thank you.
Four to one.
All right, thanks, everybody. We'll take, thanks so much, everybody. And we can take just a minute to allow anyone from the audience who would like to make their way out if you are not intending to stay for the rest of the meeting. That is fine. Okay. That's done. Okay, that's done. Great. We're moving on to this one. Okay.
Step out.
Do you want to get, step out? Okay, that's fine. We'll give it, we'll give it a second here. Centuries, I'm just going to call for a five-minute recess. Okay, so we'll take a five-minute recess right now.
You're watching CNET, Center County's Government and Educational Access Network.
I will call us back to order, and we will move on to approval of a written decision of a conditional use application for a studio for instruction of music, performing arts, a mixed martial arts studio on property located at 1445 West College Avenue. And I believe we'll go to maybe Christina or the manager. I'm not so young.
Mr. Tron actually is unable to be with us this evening, and so I'll just bring to the board's attention kind of a repeat of the introduction to this application that the township received August 8th, which was for a conditional use for a property located at 1445 West College Avenue. More details are actually provided in with the narrative that mirror much what was presented to the board at the last meeting. The board had approved for the conditional use application to be approved. Therefore, this evening is a formal written decision for your action, and as part of the agenda, the writ decision is provided, which would be then executed between the parties, the township, as well as Penn State University. Mr. Julian Morales was unable to join us this evening, but I do believe he spoke and answered questions by the board. And so this evening really is just the formalized action to allow the township to issue the permit.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and start with a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the Board of Supervisors approve this written decision.
Does Omari second?
All right, discussion. Let me start with Matt.
No.
No? Omari, anything? Any comments or questions? I'm seeing none. All right, if there are none, we will go to the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. All right, thank you. Okay, we move on now to discussion on the 2025 Center Region Council of Governments Summary Budget, and we'll go to the manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Provided this evening is a much more detailed summary of the COG budget, and presented with the budget is a breakdown of what the increased expenditures are for Ferguson Township. I'll go ahead and note that all comments that are discussed this evening are required to be provided to the Executive Director by 8:00 a.m. this tomorrow morning, so we have a quick turnaround here. Staff will be capturing consensus comments by the board and forwarding that for...
You have one more week.
Oh, I have one more week. Thank you so much, Ben.
Fantastic, okay.
I appreciate that, although we do better under pressure, so I'm not joking. So we have, we actually have a full week. So I'll just reiterate, though, however, that staff will be capturing the consensus comments made by the board, and those comments will be forwarded to the Executive Director. This also provided in the narrative breaks down what the allocations are or contributions from the township to COG with the fund balance being applied and without the fund balance applied. And the only reason that's presented to the board is recognizing that while our contributions are about $1 million, less than what they will be next year, the purpose for that is just, is because of the application of those fund balances that are being applied to reduce the contributions, and so that's appreciative by, by the COG staff and the Executive Director. I'll go ahead and yield the floor to the Executive Director of COG, as well as the Finance Director, to review briefly any items of interest and answer questions the board may have.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. For those who do not know me, I am Ben Estelle, and I am the new Executive Director for the Center Region Council of Governments. I believe I'm in Week Eight now here, and most of that has been spent working with budget items. Because I am so new here, I'm not sure how things were done in the past for these kinds of meetings. However, I pointed out to everybody so far that there are at least eight hours of budget hearings available through CNET that you can watch for detailed discussions of everything that went in to making this budget. If you have to focus on one, focus on the fourth meeting where the decisions were made by the Finance Committee that came into this summary budget. As was mentioned, we are looking at a 5.64% increase over 2024's budget, and there are several factors that go into that. That is above the initial guidance that was provided by the Finance Committee to COG staff in formulating the budget. However, after redoing the formula with the new insurance numbers, since we were told to anticipate a 19.9% rate, this actually falls under the prescribed rate that was set by the formula from the Finance Committee. That number did come down to, I believe, 17.3, I believe was the final number, so there is some savings there, but is still substantially higher than what was originally As the manager was so kind to point out, there is extensive use of the fund balance in this budget, and this is something we've been calling out to every municipality, and we discussed at length in the Finance Committee hearings. There are a couple reasons for this. Some fund balance absolutely needed to be used for items. As Kim's staff worked to unwind fund balances that had been accumulated over a number of years in some agencies, it was discovered that there were some COVID delays in purchasing, particularly with parks, that led to some items being budgeted multiple times over a couple of years, which meant that our municipal partners paid for the same items on multiple occasions. Therefore, the fund balance generated from that was applied towards new equipment rather than adding in additional funds or additional requests for funding in some of these areas. In other funds with certain agency budgets, that is not the case. The COG admin budget in particular uses the remaining $92,000 of the fund balance to balance that for 2025. These are not one-time expenses. These are recurring expenses, so there will be increases for the 2026 budget unless our municipal partners ask for significant changes to the structure of the COG in general. However, one of the big items that we will be working on, and Kim has already started laying out the plan for, is working on true fund balance policies for the COG. This was one of the first items I brought up to the Finance Committee. I heard lots of laughter, because this has apparently been brought up numerous times, and nothing has ever been done about it. We will be pursuing this. I expect that by mid-year of next year, we will have fund balance policies across the board for each of our agencies and the individual funds that fall under them. We will likely also be adding an additional fund through there, as was discussed in the Lucy Committee, so that we can create a separation between regional planning and local planning to make sure that our partners in the regional planning side of things are not funding fund balance on the local planning side. And so we will make a firm break there to make sure that that is clear for the future and that nobody has to worry that their dollars are being used to subsidize another community's local planning functions. One of the other changes that will come in the future is that we will do, bless you, a five-year outlook of the budget. COG has traditionally just done the year-by-year budget, and we will only ask for approval of one year at a time. However, I find it most useful to project at least five years in the budget process so that our communities and the COG administration itself better understands the full impact, or at least the foreseeable impact of any decisions that are made. When you build a new regional park and you only look at a single year's budget, you see the one-time expense for the construction of that with the expectation that I only pay once for this, and that does not account for the operational needs, the upkeep of those facilities. That can better be reflected through a five-year budget. We were asked just last night why... We were asked just last night, why not 10 to 15 years? Because many of our decisions actually reflect much further down, down the line. And that is very true. However, I found that once you start looking beyond five years, your numbers become far more out of whack as you go. It is very difficult to project exactly what's going to happen in any market beyond a five-year period. Even at year five, you're getting pretty sketchy on what you can truly expect for the future. I ordered a fire engine, I believe that was two years ago, for my last community, which they won't receive until sometime in 2026 because of the way construction cycles are. And I believe it was about $608,000 was our total price, price tag for that engine. That truck now sells for over a million dollars if you ordered it today. That is how extreme some of these changes can be when you start looking at more than just a five-year scale. That is within a five-year period and is certainly an extreme example, but is one of the reasons why we are strained to those five-year outlooks. The other point that I've been, you know, sharing with each of our communities was the first instruction that I gave to our agency directors when preparing for our budget hearings, which is that the COG is a service organization and I do not want any of our agencies selling anything to our municipal partners. We will, we will not be asking for things that COG staff wants. That is not what we are here for. We are here to serve the needs of our municipal partners. Everything that is in the budget has come from a request made of the COG. Our partners ask us for certain services or to explore certain ideas and services. And we put together the costs for how we can achieve that. And then we present it to our municipal partners to either accept that or reject it. And that is how we will continue to move forward. Some of these are very clear and outright. If somebody says, what would it take to start a whole new park system? We can put together the numbers and we will put together the operational costs for the future. But some of the things that, you know, we hear, you know, we didn't ask for this new mower. You did ask for the grass to be mowed. And if equipment is failing on us, we have to have that new mower in order to mow the grass there. And so we are just trying to meet the needs of our communities when we put these items into the budget and present them to, first to the Finance Committee and then to our communities as a whole for their approval. However, we will not be asking for items for the COG. That is not how we should be operating. It's not how we should be looking at things. It is, the idea is that COG should not be driving the municipal budgets, but the municipal budgets will drive the COG. With that said, we are happy to take your questions. We will answer everything that we can. We did not, any questions that we received ahead of time through email, we have already responded to. And I don't believe there was anything else that we were asked to be prepared to discuss in depth tonight, but as much as we can discuss, we are happy to do so.
Thanks so much. I appreciate all those comments. That's very helpful. I'm going to look to Matt here too, as our Finance Committee liaison. If you want to tell us how you want to kind of walk us through this.
Sure, we can, a couple of different ways. And first off, I appreciate the sentiments, right, about the service towards municipalities and the citizens. So thank you for that. I think that perspective is an important one for us to carry forward. One of the options that we have is we can always go through those items that I know we talked about here due to the timing of one of our previous supervisors' meetings. It was right before that meeting on Thursday. So some of those comments were then brought forth to the, to the final budget hearing for review, et cetera. So I'm happy to go ahead and go through that list. Or we can also see if other things have bubbled up for folks in the interim between when, you know, we last talked about it here and maybe take a look at that. So why don't we start with that, if you don't mind? If, I'd like to hear from other supervisors, if there are items that maybe we didn't discuss last time in maybe a second round or a second review that you've done that you wanted to bring forth. That might be a good place to start before we recap the other ones. I'm just looking around, see if anybody...
I don't have anything new.
Okay, I mean, if nothing, then I will say a couple of things that we heard then after I provided a financial report was the shift of the $295,000 from the fund to go ahead and pay for the bathroom over at Hess Field. I got the impression that was something that maybe didn't sit well with, with Ferguson in the idea that we were taking money that we had allocated previously and we're, we're just granting a bathroom. So I wasn't sure if that was a topic that we wanted to talk through a little bit more about that transfer and if we're really on board with that going towards the bathroom at Hess Field.
Well, in the opening remarks from Mr. Estelle, he said exactly what, but it was writ large. It was a much larger fund balance use, probably filling a number of gaps, but one that was highlighted obviously was this bathroom. And I think it was more of the narrative around it that got, that kind of got my goat, if you will, of, oh yeah, yeah, we brought the budget down, the bathroom down to $300,000. But that wasn't the case. It was, we used the money that we already charged you to pay for the bathroom. It's still a $600,000 bathroom. That said, I understand that that bathroom is fairly important down there. It smells pretty bad in the spring and summertime as folks are going to use it. I would just encourage, and I'll say it again after, that's probably the hundredth time I've said it, that we make sure that, that the outside organizations that are not paying for, paying perhaps a, I don't live here fee, should pay an I don't live here fee. Maybe even charge, start charging for parking for people that don't live in the center region in some of those places, put a little box on Saturdays and Sundays, it's, somebody bands it. I don't know, but there's got to be something where all these municipalities are paying into that, these regional parks, and a lot of people are coming in to use it. That's great. And I think there's some benefit to some other municipalities that have hotels and some other things. But Ferguson doesn't quite have all those same.
What I would like to say is that this isn't, you are not the first person to say that as we attend the various municipal meetings. And that is something that we will look at in the future. There's going to be a lot for, for me to do to kind of get, get a full grasp of this organization and everything that is going on in it. These are, we have multiple large agencies that are going to take long looks to see exactly where we can create savings, change operations. Parks is going to be one of the first ones that we look at. One of the things we discussed through the budget hearings is that we will start with a programmatic look at Parks and Recreation. So try to create firm budgets for every program that gets put on through Parks and Rec so that our communities have more of a voice in which ones they want to see and which ones they want to subsidize versus which ones, if it's not at least cost neutral, they don't want to continue on in the future. The other aspect of that is to work towards service level budgeting, at least in Parks and Recreation. And if you're unfamiliar with service level budgeting, it's essentially saying, we will offer you the bronze package of lawn service where we're going to cut the grass every two weeks and it's going to cost this much money. If you want it cut every 10 days, that's your silver package. Then we can move on up to various levels of service. That's a crude breakdown of service level budgeting, but for a short introduction, so that we can offer you choices in exactly how, how we operate for the various municipal parks throughout the region. The other component of that is that I know the Parks and Rec staff is, has already engaged with Patent Township on an MOU process for the parks. And it's something we would like to go through each of our municipalities with. One of the things we want to capture, because it has never really been captured, is firm information on the size of every municipal park that COG is responsible for taking care of, which pieces of that we are responsible for. So that we have better records of how many machine mowing acres we are taking care of, how many hand mowing acres we are taking care of, how much trimming needs to be done in any individual park, which playgrounds we are responsible for inspecting, servicing, et cetera, as we go through. That way, we can provide a much better look at the total view of our park system, how it relates to each community individually. And we can provide those better breakdowns in the future. That is not something I can offer you for this year. That's going to take a lot of work to get done for next year. But I think it's worthwhile to say that is the direction that we will be heading so that we can start to look at all of those individual items, including the municipal discounts, if you will, versus out of people from outside of the region using our assets.
I'll just say, that's, that's very encouraging to hear that you're going to take that kind of look and approach to this. It's very different and it's, it's just so practical. You know, one thing that we've talked about here a lot is just breaking down the costs in parks. You know, if you want to participate in programs, if you want to participate in park maintenance. You know, we all, as part of our budgeting process, put so many dollars into our municipal parks. We get the maintenance service out, but Parks and Rec uses all those parks for their programming. So where is the offset there, you know? So I would encourage you to also be factoring that in to that, to that evaluation. But then just back to Omari's point really quick in regards to this budget, the use of those dollars in the fund balance is, is my concern because, you know, if we voted, say twice, to pay for one particular vehicle, you know, in the absence of a fund balance policy, I would prefer those funds be returned to the municipality because those are municipal tax dollars. And then if, if we're putting, you know, another $300,000 into the, into the park, then that's what we're putting into the park. So it's, but it's our choice, you know? We've already, we didn't, we didn't pay those, you know, that contribution for that. We paid it for vehicles. And so I just, I think there's a loss of transparency there when money is allocated for certain things and then is just shifted over. And I'm very concerned about that. So, so I'll leave it at that and...
No, and I think that's an important aspect of this. And did I hear you say that when it comes back to the municipalities, it's with interest? Just kidding. Understood. And I think that, right, that's an important aspect is transparency in all of this. Speaking to transparency, because this is a little bit of a dialogue right now, which I appreciate and I hope others do as well. I think the thing when we hear about like a cost neutral program in Parks and Rec, it would be good to know the impact of the overhead, for example, to maybe find an instructor. An example might be underwater basket weaving, might be cost neutral, but it took 45 hours of COG time to find an instructor for underwater basket weaving. And now it's cost neutral. Well, it's not really cost neutral. We sunk that cost into the 45 hours, for example, so...
The admin piece has been what has been missing from the programmatic budgets. So that is one of the things we will, you know, most be taking a look at is how much admin time is being used to make each, each of those programs function. They have pretty solid numbers already on costs on a program by program basis in their little shells. But that doesn't include all of the work that goes on above to make, to make it that easy to happen. And so those are the pieces that we will be looking at.
Oh, I'm sorry. One other thing I meant to mention in regards to Omari's comment. I think that is related to also to the fee schedule as that's applied. And I, is that a Park Authority?
That's an authority.
So, so there we have the concerns stated by the elected officials and, you know, the municipalities, but it's not a decision that is made by us. So there again is that, that conflict and, you know, things not lining up in the governance. So as you're looking through all of these different things with the, with the cost allocations, I think incorporating that governance piece is really important.
I know that there is, there are further governance conversations planned at the COG level. I believe, I think just next week, there is a Parks Governance Committee hearing or meeting that we had to continue that conversation that I know started earlier, but has not really progressed.
Yeah, I think, you know, I know a lot of those have been canceled, as Patty's just mentioning too. And I think, I don't know, I think there, I don't know where that committee stands right now, but I know there is interest in really kind of just opening this up and really looking at this. And since you are just coming on now, I think it's really such a good opportunity for you to get in there at this, at this point, when they're really trying to reassess the governance structure. So I would just encourage you to really be a part of that. The governance is so tightly, tightly tied to, to all these expenses. So, yes.
Excellent. I think maybe just a couple of other things that were on our list, was on our list previously. I know we talked about the, the parking lot here amongst ourselves about the $130,000. There was going to be a conversation with the code office about some cost sharings. Where did that end up?
Yep, so they would be, and it is reflected in, in the summary budget that the code agency would be adding an additional $50,000 in towards that parking lot project, separate from the installation of the charging stations that had been discussed prior.
Great. So again, it's reducing that $130,000 that we anticipated, essentially. Okay, good. Again, I'm happy to hit on some of the items that we had talked about unless they're... Okay, I also want to thank library staff. When we talked, one of the things was the $32,000 for the flooring in the kids area, which understood that was struck from the budget then in that discussion, which I appreciate. But we anticipate we're going to have to do that down the road. But for this year, that, that was taken off. So I appreciate that. There was also public furniture. We, I think we were looking, I'm sorry, the, the furniture and fixtures. We're looking to do something smaller there. It was in, at $10,000. I think that's still...
For which one?
It was for the, let me just zoom in here so I'm following my line.
In the library?
No, library capital, public furniture. That one, I believe, I'm sorry, that one was going to stay. I apologize. I was mixing up because I was on the wrong line here. So please disregard that one.
One of the other reduction, if you don't mind me, to begin from our discussion, one of the other reductions that we had was with Millbrook Marsh on the pavilion. Basically, there would be, I believe it was cut down to 7,500 in order to fix the floor of the pavilion because it represents a safety hazard. But that cut another $7,500 out of the pavilion piece.
Yeah, I think the, the motion was to keep the $10,000 for minor repairs and then the 7.5K for, maybe that was the flooring. So it was going to be a total of 17.5 instead of the original.
Yeah, the, the pavilion itself was originally 15.
Yes.
And that was reduced to 7,500 plus the $10,000 for the other upkeep piece.
Right. So I think we took that 25,000 and then ended up with 17.5.
Correct.
Yep.
So there's $10,000 budgeted for boardwalk repairs and 7,500 for the pavilion.
Correct.
And I think a lot of that was going to go towards safety with leveling and everything.
Yes, because currently there is an issue because it is a gravel floor and it is very uneven. It suffers from washouts during heavy rains. That we have had instances of individuals who sit on the outside of the picnic tables and then the entire table flips over on them because of the arch that forms from the wear on that floor.
Yeah, so safety concerns definitely in there. That's why we want to allocate money towards that. One of the other ones was the, the parks operating the program specialist. I believe that, that one's on the...
The, the cost was reduced in a, in a couple of ways. One, the, the original budget followed the program plan. And I'm probably going to get some of these classification numbers wrong, but I believe it was originally listed at like a grade... a grade nine employee. That was later reduced to a grade seven employee, which reduced the wages, which also reduced a number of the ancillary costs outside of healthcare. That was then also reduced to a nine-month expense for 2025, knowing that that employee would not be hired at the beginning of the year. It would likely, they would likely not start until April. So there is a three-month reduction to those expenses for 2025. That would be a full year's expense starting in 2026.
So we saw some cost savings in there, but if you look at taking it from 75% to the 100% that it would be, and even at the lower grade, it was only a little bit of cost savings. I still think that the thing that I'd like to see a little bit more detail on or something broken out is how the benefits package is rolled into the burden rate or included into in a number that I would expect to be a burden rate, not a burden rate plus, you know, some sort of benefit package associated with that. So that's something I think we'll have to unpack too.
Yeah, and what we came down to and even talked to some of our finance directors is that when we're doing those burden rates, there is a percentage cost that we can calculate for almost everything outside of healthcare because healthcare is a fixed cost and is not, is not based on the wage level for that employee. Almost everything else we can do as a percentage so that we can give you that burden cost, but that there is a fixed cost associated with healthcare.
So maybe for the HR committee and others, see what I'm doing there?
Well, now that you bring that up, I remember Frank Harden had shared about whether or not there was, I think it was like a high deductible plan with a HSA account attached to it, just giving COG employees those options of maybe a lower premium but higher out-of-pocket with a, with, you know, the HSA to supplement any of those out-of-pocket costs or going with a higher premium, lower deductible plan, given them those options as well. And I don't know if COG is doing it, but I know a lot of employers also do. I don't know if they provide, if incentive is the right word, but some employers do have things in place to maybe encourage, especially somebody on a family plan, maybe look at if their spouse is working, look at their plan and just kind of evaluate which is maybe the better option.
So there is an incentive in place to not take COG's insurance.
Yeah, that's, that's good. And so just back to the Parks, the Parks Specialist, so what is the savings? The summary here doesn't have the number. It says it was taken from a level seven to a level five, and it's reduced to 75% of the year, so a nine-month position. So do we know?
That's just for, that's just for next year?
That's just for next year. So 2026, it'll be the full cost, but do we know what, and you're saying it just wasn't that much of a difference, but we don't know the difference?
I think it was reduced down to something like 75,000 instead of the 120. I don't have the numbers, but again, that was only a nine-month contract and, you know, was going to balloon up.
So I want to say that the savings for the grade change, I believe, was around $20,000, and then you save, that brought it down from 120 down to 100, and then by going with 75% of the year, that saved another $25,000 for 2025.
So basically, it moves from 120 to 100, so.
For a year.
For a year.
Yes, for a year, but because this is only, yeah, so this, since it's only nine months, we're going to see only 75,000 approximately in this budget, but we know it's going to be 100.
Right.
But that was a request from the committee, so we're not trying to push that out as COG is saving you another, that's why I keep reiterating, come 2026.
Exactly.
Full year expense.
Yeah, that's exactly it.
I don't want anybody thinking that we're trying to just slide something past that that was a requested change to the budget, and it's a reasonable change because we will not have somebody hired that quickly.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think again, this gets into the whole, we hired somebody, we can bring in more services. Oh, we need more, more facilities. Well, we hired somebody else. It really is, and I know you're going to be taking a look at it.
My, my goal here is that we are not building anything more than what is already planned until we pay for the things that we have.
Amazing.
Take care of what you have.
One of, you know, one of the big challenges that Parks and Rec has faced has been that there have been inordinate number of projects put on to that agency without the support network behind them to manage such projects. Several of these regional parks really required a project manager in place to guide the entire process, and I know that there were project managers and plenty of people quitting and changing. That burden fell onto the staff, which then made everything more complicated and has led to additional difficulties in getting things opened on time. I think it is best if we all take a breath, we get through the projects that are here and in the pipeline, and we make sure that we have everything planned working first before we pursue additional.
It sounds like you have a very good handle on, you know, the history as well, you know, what got us into the situation we are now. You know, we look at these things and there's not, it's not bad to have a new Parks Specialist, you know, it's just that the increases are just only sustainable for so long. We've hit that point, and so now is when we've got to, you know, start really scrutinizing each individual thing, so, but I really appreciate, you know, obviously, the time.
It's no fun coming into a budget after everybody spent all the money.
Yeah.
And then being the one to say, look, we're going to put, try to put as much of a fence around this as possible. But that, what I hope everybody realizes is that takes time. To truly get a firm grasp on each of those items, we will be as diligent as we can to make sure that we are being as frugal as possible with every item that we have. But, you know, we are, for the most part, we are looking at our safety issues and to be able to maintain the services that we have for now. This is, I certainly know that the Parks crew would appreciate the time to breathe and to, to work out all of the new operations that have been put on them through, through all of the building in recent years.
My perspective, they're doing a fantastic job, so please, I hope that makes its way back to them.
Absolutely. And they are. One of the things that I have been most pleased with coming into this is there's a fantastic staff at the COG who really care about what they're doing, care about our communities and their missions. But it is tough when you get into a growth phase to know when to hit the brakes on things, and it is typically after the point that you realize, just like when you learn, get driving lessons and they tell you, you know, by the time you realize you should have been hitting the brakes, you probably should have been hitting the brakes about 150 feet back. So we're going to do everything we can to control, control that, and certainly maintain what we have and the service level that we have for the moment, and then reevaluate everything so that our partners can make the decisions of where they want to go in the future.
Great. That was really all that was kind of on the list in our discussion topics previously, so I'm good.
So you're satisfied with those? And so maybe we could take some, you know, general comments. I've kind of got some notes here. Yeah.
One item.
Yes.
Singular item for me is the formula, and it's not a today thing, but I did want to just make sure that if this body's okay with it, that we just kind of put everybody on notice that using a tenor power mini-year-old formula that has some, I think that the underlying data and the how they may have gotten to the numbers, I'm not, I'm not quite okay with. I think we should probably use the data that the COG is collecting now to actually come up with a formula and then go forward from there or maybe rethink how we originally thought about this, but, sorry, go ahead.
And this is one of the areas that, yeah, COG administration is happy to help facilitate those discussions and, you know, try to not pass the buck any more than necessary, but those are items for the municipal partners to determine amongst themselves what those, what those breakdowns should be. We will facilitate, have the conversations between, between our partners, but I don't think it is the COG's decision as we represent all of you to come in and dictate, this is the exact formula that we should be, should be using on that. But happy to be part of the conversations and providing as much data to work through that process as we can.
Then I would ask you the reverse. What data can you provide that would help the formula? And that's not a today answer?
No.
So you can put that in our comments.
That'd be great. If you're okay with it.
Yeah.
And again, something we'll bring up in finance. Yeah, because I know we started the conversation, when was it, well, early on, when I would have loved to see things drawn in crayon on a single piece of paper, somebody explain it to me, and I think we started to get there with the conversations of May, June, and July.
The, we went back and looked, I believe it was May 9th or around there was the date that finance adopted the formula for this year.
And you were talking about the municipal contributions for me, so population.
Correct. Population, assess value, and earn income wages.
Yes.
And so not only, because I think I'll just point out one thing, census. I said, oh, the census numbers don't match the census, you know, thank you, Kev, where it came back and said, oh, well, we pull out students 18 to 24. Oh, great. Or we pull out 18 to 24-year-olds, not necessarily students. And so I think, okay, it makes sense, you're pulling out students, but wait a minute, if there's a fire at a building that a student's living in, it doesn't matter if they're 18 to 24, we are staffing for ready for everybody in the center region, period, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so then I think that that is something to consider as we're looking into this, like it doesn't matter who you have, we are staffing for ready, especially these emergency services, which by the way, I'm very interested in.
Good, okay. Yeah, no, I was just going to say, yeah, let's, and before we close out here, we'll just kind of go over the comments, so anything else over here? General, specific?
Yeah, mine was general, but it was pretty much covered, I think, for quite, quite some time. There has been concerns with increasing costs and what we can sustain over time and municipal contributions, and I agree, there is opportunities to look at formulas, and it's very encouraging from what I'm hearing that there may be a lot of dialogue on this in the coming year. I like, like to take diplomatic approaches. I know there has been some people that have said, or municipalities that have gone as far as just withdrawing from particular programs, and I find that discouraging, especially without, you know, a thorough discussion behind those reasons, and definitely encourage and support any dialogue and what we can do to just, you know, fine tune the financial end of this in the coming, coming year, years. So.
Nothing to add.
I just have a couple things. I'll go over my things and let you close it out, make sure you've got everything here. So one, okay, so the COG, the general increase in the budget was 5.64%, but Ferguson Townships is 6.81% increase. Did I read that?
That's correct.
Correct.
And that's with the fund balance being used, a lot of fund balance being used. So this is just a note of concern about that. So I think that's a, you know, a high rate of increase. I think we have this guideline that's just for status quo expenses. I don't know how helpful that is. I think, you know, we kind of imposed our own guideline on top of that. So it was, you know, what on top of that are we going to contribute? And I think that may be the direction to go for a number of different things. I think, you know, how much, how much can we increase in, you know, whatever, the planning agency, you know, what can, what are we going to commit to? So just, you know, looking at more hard numbers or percentage cutoffs, I think may be useful because it just doesn't give a really, sorry, concrete indication of where we're going to be next year. So the five-year budgeting cycle, I think, is really, or the, the planning on that is good. Okay, and then just for general comments, I had with regard to the parks, yeah, looking at the budgets, breaking out, breaking out costs, allowing municipal input on fee schedule, incorporating the governance discussions into the review of costs of parks budgets, I think that was something, you know, I still, again, I have this concern about using the fund balance. I'm still not comfortable with how this is planned, so I guess I would incorporate that as a comment too. I'm just, and I know like with, I'll use local planning as an example. If there needs to be a refund, say, for, to the municipalities if they didn't get their local planning services, it just goes as a credit to them for the following year, and so it's not that it's returned to them. And maybe that's a way to do that, but I'm just, I'm very concerned about, you know, you got charged double for something, we budgeted twice for it and it didn't get purchased, so now we're just going to move it over to pay for this other project. Not that we wouldn't want to do that, but I think that needs to be laid out a lot more clearly. So that would be a comment I would suggest if there's consensus around that and if there's additional comment on that.
What's the alternative, though?
Well, the, what they're doing now is just transferring. What I'm saying is lay out those steps, is to add transparency to where that fund balance came from, because that was our question initially, is where is the fund balance from? And if it's from double budgeting certain things, then let's show that.
So it's not, I guess I'm just trying to get to like consensus around transparency, not necessarily, don't build the bathroom, don't use the 295. We're all okay with that. It's just more, be more transparent about these fund balance things.
That's what was indicated in our last round of comments, but, you know, Matt can take back whatever and we can issue whatever comments we have.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's just cleaning up that process because we voted on that. We voted to have, like, purchase vehicles or something. So it was a vote that went through the process, through the body.
Yeah, I'm with you. I'm just trying to figure out what are we consensencing it on? Is it around like, get a better process in finance committee or we don't want the bathroom?
Well, yeah, I think this goes back to the fund balance, you know, as a whole, right? Looking at that and potentially what I would recommend is that in the fund balance or approach to fund balance that's being developed, that it accounts for things like this to potentially be, and what I'd like to hear is maybe consensus around credits back to, credited back to the municipality.
So that was one of the concepts that I presented to the group. Typically, on your capital budgets, you're planning based on an actual project. We know a fixed cost, and if there is extra at the end, then yes, there is no benefit to the COG keeping that, and we can redistribute that based on the formulas which they were submitted. On the operational side, the general concept would be to get to a certain level of fund balance, and then if we go above that amount, then once again, that gets redistributed out at the beginning of the next year. And if we fall below, then we look at a kind of fill- Um, and if we fall below, then we look at a kind of fillback, uh, timeline. So for most municipal fund balance policies, you're not trying to rebuild an entire fund balance all at once. You say, you know, over a three to five-year period, we're going to put X number of dollars, uh, into this fund balance until we hit the prescribed level. That way, nobody's being hit all at once. Fund balance should be extra and hopefully you don't need all of that extra at one time. You know, the big concern on our side is that, yeah, if, if there is some, you know, major downturn, the COG is going to be faced with the exact same constraints that our municipalities are going to. And if you are all struggling at the time, then the COG is going to struggle double if there is no fund balance available to the COG at that time. Um, not that, you know, we won't struggle, just, we will struggle twice as much because we won't have the safety nets that our municipal partners have, uh, to help themselves out without a fund balance available to us. Um, and so that is all we're trying to do there is to create kind of that safety cushion for those budgets. Um, the example I've given to some is, uh, we had an animal control, uh, authority that I was part of in my last community. And we had plenty of historical data that said, you know, my community typically is responsible for 4% of the calls that come into animal control throughout the year. That data is tracked all year long. Uh, the end of, or I should say, the beginning of the next year, calculation is done on, this is our total volume of calls, this was your actual percentage. And so we might've come in at 3.6%, at which point my dues for the next year are reduced by equal dollars to that point four. And another community is going to have to contribute an additional percentage because they actually used more of the service than what they planned on using for the year. Um, that's just one concept, uh, that works in the municipal world, uh, to help with some of these funding discussions.
Almost, almost kind of sounds like what we're looking for maybe in, uh, parks when it comes to u- use of services and.
Yeah.
Um, attending programs and such.
And I'll just say, this, this is welcome, that idea, the first acknowledging that there are other ways of doing this and thinking about these things differently. I appreciate that. Related to that is that idea of bronze, silver, gold type of services. Wonderful. Do the same thing in software and, and everything in, in IT. Makes perfect sense, service level agreement. So to come in with an a la carte menu, what, what would you like? Really, I think reframes the conversation and then allows us to take a deeper and harder look at what we really need, you know, to sustain the things that we like. Thank you for that.
And then the last two things I had were the reexamining the COG formula. Um, yeah, I think it's definitely time for that. It did get brought up last year, didn't go anywhere. I mean, we contribute more than a quarter of it, so I don't know if others are going to be as eager to look at it as we are. So it's going to take some, uh, encouragement probably to get that looked at, um, which again, is why we keep mentioning our own cap on things.
Right, right.
So, um, and then the last thing I just wanted to mention is the year before last, I don't believe it was last year, I think it was the year before last, I could be wrong. We did a survey of, uh, all the electeds and the municipalities of our priorities. And, um, I would just encourage you to look at that if it hasn't been brought up yet. And number one was safety. You know, we, we value public safety. And number two, I think, was taking care of what we have. So I think if, and beyond that, I'm, I don't remember, but, um, I think it was just a very helpful exercise. I think it's still relevant, so I just encourage you to, to, uh, look into, look into that.
And if I could add to the priority list, I think, I forget what meeting it was, uh, where it was, and I'm not recalling the specifics, something like, here are the 32 priorities that we have. 32 priorities? No, what, they're only like two, right, that are, are really priorities of this list, right? Well, no, they're all priorities. They can't be. So, which, again, getting back to what are the priorities that the municipalities are setting that we want to go ahead and have that conversation about? That's, again, an aspect or a lens to look through.
They, they can all be priorities, just not right now.
Yeah. Right. And that's why that exercise was so interesting, because it forced everybody to really say, okay, you've got, you have to rank them. And around the general forum table, that's where they came out. And so it was very interesting to see where we all aligned. And it was public safety at the top. It was taking care of what we already have, our, our facilities and our employees. And, um, you know, and beyond that, it's, you know, whatever else we can do, you know, things kind of, uh, fell after that.
And we can use that for anything. And when I say the priorities, they can be applied wherever. And I think we see them being applied, for example, in the pavilion over at Millbrook Marsh, where it's, here's the money to level it off and make it safe, you don't need to go ahead and restain everything, though. That's not a safety issue. So again, we can take that, those priorities and really apply them anywhere, which is an important thing for us to keep in mind. So, that's.
Well, if you don't have anything else, if anybody else has anything, we can look for a motion to submit these comments.
This is Patty, so moved.
I'm looking for the motion. I'll second.
Um, any other discussion on that? And I'll just say, thanks so much again to all of you for coming and, uh, being so available and, um, all the information you provided during the budget hearings as well. It was very, very useful and, um, very encouraged, uh, I think, I think by everything I've heard. So really, really appreciate it.
It's our pleasure. We thank you for having us here.
Absolutely. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, well, thank you and thank you all again.
Really appreciate it.
Okay, let's see, are we on the consent agenda? Okay, so we will move to new business. First up, we have the consent agenda. Did anybody need to remove anything for discussion? And if not, can we get a motion to approve?
Uh, what, well, I feel like I had something on the treasures report.
Did you want to pull that one?
Yeah, can I pull it, please? Thank you.
So can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with items B, C, D, and E?
Ms. Omari, so moved.
This is Patty, I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, so we will now go to the treasures report.
I found it. I had a couple of questions just on pages, uh, page four, three, uh, yeah, page four, where I saw the police pension trust fund 60 there, uh, that had a 350% budget to actual increase. Um, and come to understand it was some market gains. Uh, is that correct, Madam Manager?
Yes, it's unrealized gains. And we are now recording them monthly and reconciling them monthly. So you're seeing them in the treasures report on a quarterly basis, whereas in the past you had not. But it is, it is reconciling with unrealized gains and realized gains.
And then on, uh, was it fund 60, the non-uniform pension trust fund? That had some expenses that weren't budgeted.
That is correct. We had retirees this year that were not, um, accounted for because the, uh, what is that called? Not just communication, but the, uh, notice was not received prior to the development of the budget for 2024. Therefore, it's an unknown or unaccounted-for expense and realized in real time. Uh, that is something that we are considering as we develop the 2025 budget and recognizing that we are aware of, of one confirmed and potentially one other. And so we're ensuring that the budget has those tentative, uh, funds allocated so that it's recognized in the budget. We have not previously done that in the past.
Thank you so much, Madam Manager.
You're welcome.
All right, okay. So can we have a motion to accept the treasure report?
Ms. Omari, so moved.
This is Patty, I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. All right, thank you. Okay, we will go now to the item we had moved. Can I go back to an earlier page?
You're on.
It's page two of the agenda.
Section six, item one.
Eleven, unfinished business. This was the public.
Actually, yeah, that is 11.
Okay. Okay, so just, um, just to clarify, we are moving back to the TIF item. Okay.
It's five.
This is a public hearing on a resolution to suspend the revenue allocation as stated in Resolution 2021-37 for fiscal year, uh, for 2025 fiscal year. And we'll go to the manager and finance director.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a, a pretty, uh, thorough review of the Transportation Improvement Fund since its inception in 2001, I believe, yes. Um, with Resolution 2001-25, the initiation of the Transportation Improvement Fund. Um, at that time, provided in the agenda in the narrative section, it shows exactly what the revenue reallocations were for the TIF. And it's my understanding, after review of minutes and also talking to staff who were actually here at that time, um, that the, the intent initially for the TIF was that we would, that there were specific road projects that needed to be improved. And so the TIF was presented as a form of revenue reallocation to the TIF fund to fu- to fund those specific road projects. Um, initially, the idea is that the TIF or the reallocation of funds would sunset thereafter those specific road projects were complete. Um, however, throughout its, you know, evolution and continued discussion for appropriation of funds, there had been amendments to the resolution, or, you know, there had been amendments to the TIF and how the board or the township wanted to fund the TIF over time. Um, provided in the agenda, you see a breakdown of what the percentage was, was of the mills, of real estate tax, um, what the percentage for revenue reallocation to the TIF based on earned income, which was 0.1%. And then revenues generated by the real estate transfer tax, which was 0.75 of the real estate transfer tax or 60% of the total, 1.25% of total real estate transfer tax revenue. Um, and then of course, in its latest, uh, you know, we, we, the township amended the TIF in 2008, possibly, but certainly in 2014, again in 2019, and then again in 2021. And currently, what we have is, um, anticipated ending fund balance for the TIF December 31st of 2024 at approximately $5.5 million. And so what's being recommended to offset the $1.2 million generated through the stormwater fee, um, which is approximately 1.2 million after you reduce the, um, the, the, the funds for exemptions and credits, uh, that's about 1.2 million. And when you, when you suspend the reallocation of revenue as determined by Resolution 2021-37, it's, it's approximately $1.2 million of revenue that would stay in the general fund. Recognizing that all of our, and I, I think it's fair, of course, we heard this evening, um, and in various contexts, that yes, the township has Chapter 26, Stormwater Management requirements, um, as also, you know, informed by state regulatory agencies that require us to maintain our MS4 permit. Um, those expenditures do not necessarily go away. Uh, we will continue to ensure that our stormwater infrastructure, uh, maintenance and management continues. And what will happen are those expenditures will be funded by the general fund and therefore not reallocating the revenues to the TIF for 2025 fiscal year only, as indicated in the resolution presented with the agenda packet, will allow that $1.2 million to stay in the general fund, which will essentially create what I'll call a wash, for a lack of term, uh, lack of better terms. Um, and so this is just step one, or phase one, if you will, of the plan that's being presented so we can complete the, what's called the proposed 2025 operating budget for consideration and further discussion at Tuesdays for a special meeting to begin discussing the, the, um, the proposed budget. And at which point, the board will receive further, uh, context for what's being proposed for their consideration on how we're going to offset the gap in expenditures compared to revenue, which, which very well would have been the situation regardless of the action taken with the stormwater fee. That concludes my summary. I'm happy to answer any questions as the board continues their deliberation.
Okay. So if there's nothing else, um, from staff, then I will go ahead and open the public hearing for comment on this item. Not seeing any comment. I will close the public hearing and we could have discussion prior to a motion, or I'm ready to take a motion, whatever the board prefers.
I'm happy to discuss first. I'm just, I get muddled on these things. I don't know if anybody else does. Uh, maybe it's because it's the first time I'm looking at it and I have a simple mind.
That's my problem, actually.
Are you muddled too? I don't know, I'm muddled.
I, I'm bef- it, it, it is, I, the public comment earlier, a lot of people shocked and whatever, they, they were all surprised at, you know. I'm surprised at this, that we haven't talked about this at all yet, like, oh, let's have a public hearing on a thing that we, we didn't talk about. Or a plan that we haven't talked about. It's like, oh, this first step. Oh, well, well, thank you for sharing the first step of a plan this meeting. So I guess I'm a hard no on this, by the way. I'm not going to support motion, um, because we've got a bed, we're, we're got a lay-in. And so I want to see the full, what's, well, what's, what, the thing that we, this body created. I, I voted yes. So now, this, this bed that we have.
Yeah.
What is the full impact now of what we're doing? And let's not like budgetary mumbo jumbo right now, no. Like, what did we do? What did we do? Let's see it, is it next week? Whatever the next meeting is.
Next Thursday.
Let's see it. That's where I am right now.
I, I'm with you 100%. Again, I think maybe this would come up at a different time, once we see the proposed budget and we start to really dig into these. And again, though, I also want to take a moment to say, if I'm, am I interpreting this correctly when I say, or when I read this? And essentially what we're doing is, we're not going to, what we're proposing is not moving 1.3 in this, 1.3 million dollars into the TIF and locking it away, but that instead we are just going to keep it in the general fund to offset stormwater. Is that a safe statement?
That's a safe statement.
Okay. Just want to make sure I have that foundational understanding that this is what this is proposing. You know, when we talk about it, I hope in the future, um, again, I'd like to talk about it though more, once we actually see the, the budget in, in front of us and maybe have those discussions at that time.
Sure.
I might, I might have a question. Um, I, I think this is a good short-term measure for this coming budget year. Um, this isn't something that we would do every year, nor should we do every year. Uh, so I, I would be supportive of this and I do understand, uh, Mr. Patterson wants to see the whole package, wants to have that further discussion. And yes, I agree, and we will ha- I, I imagine we will have time with that during the budget as well as even into the next year as we look at 2026, so.
Patty.
Uh, I, I agree with Omari on this. We wanted to burn it down, let's burn it down and, and start from the ashes. I mean, and even look at, at, at this, this particular process altogether. So, um.
Yeah. So I, I just want to say, Madam Chair, so we're, we're at a time crunch right now, okay? So if the board does decide that you want to suspend the TIF because we only have so many meetings remaining, there's only so much time to go in and do this prior to the adoption of the budget. And so I recognize what your all, what you, where your positions are, and I respect that. But at this point in time, what we've done with these, this resolution for the reallocation of revenues to the TIF is that we've built up for public works to be funded. And this, and that's what we were doing with the stormwater fee essentially, is that we're saying, we're going to restrict all these funds here specifically for transportation improvement. And right now, at the end of December of this year, we're anticipating an ending fund balance of $5.5 million that we can't utilize in any other way. And so with the anticipated expenditures, where we're at currently, we're at about 1.8, maybe $2 million of expenditures for the TIF. And so that's going to then project for, we can forecast for the end of December of 2025, in a scenario where the board suspends, and a, a funding balance that ends with about $3 million, in a scenario where we suspend the reallocation of revenues for next year and meet our expenditure.
and meet our expenditure, and do all of the projects as expended in the TIF. And so where we are currently is that this is something that, once the board has the special meetings, and then if we want to be able to hold a public hearing, we have to advertise three to seven days. And I'm just realizing and recognizing staff's time, like, we're trying to get ahead of the curb. You could certainly repeal this resolution if you were to choose to take action to approve it this evening. If you get the budget in front of you and you decide that this is not something that you want to do, you can repeal that, and that might help ensure that we're, we have a plan and a buffer to close the gap, because as your manager, I'm going to propose a budget to you either way. And the question is, am I going to propose, in a scenario, for example, a budget with a deficit of 7 million or 5 million? We all know we're having a deficit because we received the stamp presentation, and so I would just ask for you to give that some consideration. It is, ultimately, the final decision does lie with you, but, and I recognize there's some concerns and some feelings about the stormwater fee, but in preparation and realizing that staff is putting a budget together in representation of the township and making sure that our employees feel secure with the activity that they're doing and the work that they show up to do, I ask that you please give consideration to this.
Thanks, I appreciate that. Yeah, I mean, this has been amended before, so I'm, you know, committed funds are difficult, so, you know, it's hard to have that and to have, you know, build up fund balances. So I think if, you know, so I would prefer to get a draft budget that's reflective of, you know, what you're advising, rather than, you know, not. So if we didn't, if we didn't suspend reallocation to the TIF this year, you would have to kind of work around all of that, and I would rather rely on our finance director and our manager to present what they think is in our best interest. So I'd be supportive of this. I'd go back around, I guess.
So I guess my question is, when is the drop dead on this? When all of a sudden the money gets transferred out and is locked away forever?
Well, we transfer funds at the end of the year after the adoption. So the board has to adopt a budget, and that is generally done the first or the second Monday of December, at which point, that's when all the work happens within finance. It's from that point in time after the board adopts the budget until we move into the fiscal year of 2025, for example. But what this does is it allows for us to appropriately put a proposed budget where the balance, the balances are going to determine, and as mentioned, I mean, full transparency, we already knew this, right? Our expenditures exceed our revenue. We know this. We knew this from the stamp presentation. What it really comes down to is recognizing that even with the stormwater fee, we were taking revenue and restricting it only for stormwater management, or stormwater infrastructure maintenance and management. Same, same thing's happening with the TIF. We did this for the TIF, and so we build up a lot of money that we can't touch. And so what we're looking to do right now is just suspend the reallocation of revenues to shorten that gap. I mean, I, you know, I'm sure, just like with all the other budgets, there'll be lots of media attention, and it really won't matter. We are going to have a deficit, but as much as we can on the front end, present a budget so there's less movement of money, not necessarily in bank accounts, Supervisor Heller, but in terms of representation of the books on the, on the, on the paper, that you'll be reviewing and having those conversations. And so while you will discuss for fiscal year of 2025, the revenues and the expenditures at the upcoming meetings, then staff has so much time to get it updated, back in front of the board for review of the requested changes, and then back in front of the board for adoption.
Okay, I think, sorry, go ahead.
Supervisor Thompson, you said something that triggered, something and now I've forgotten it, but I may remember it later. I have full faith in you, Madam Manager, that you will get a budget, and whatever decisions this body makes, you'll be able to incorporate them effectively. I have full confidence in that. So I don't believe that you need this right now, meaning a week, two weeks, you'll be fine. Yeah? I know you want to get ahead.
I am going to make sure you're presented with what is needed and the impacts that come with that, you know.
Yeah, and so what I'd like to do is, oh, this is, here's where it is, Mr. Thompson, I think you had said, we shouldn't do this every year. I actually disagree with that, that I wonder if this is even necessary, that when this was made, 2001, someone was using paper and pencil for everything, and so it was very important to have a book for this and a book for that. You know what we have now? We have QuickBooks or whatever ERP we're using for our finances. And you don't need that stuff anymore. It's just budgetary things that you can, you can put in the system and account for it. The dollars, like, the what bank it's at and what bank account, none of that matters, at least in this case. It's, these are dollars to fund the services for the community, and it takes time to manage these accounts. It takes time to move money in these various places. So I would actually, from a, as Mr. Heller likes to say, menu of options perspective, I'd like to talk about what are the other options? Get rid of it? Do this one-time thing? Do it two times? I don't know, but I'd like to see that as it relates to the larger budget.
Okay, and sorry, I just wanted to make sure everybody had a, but it looks like no comments over here.
I was going to say, this is going to be the second budget cycle that we've had, ClearGov. I, I understand where Omari's coming from. I, I'm just not sure if we're at the point where, I don't know how else to say this, that ClearGov's got all the analytics of our budgets from years past and whatnot, that Todd can use a magic wand in his office and provide a menu of options or other ways, you know. So you are very talented. I really thank you for your hard work. I guess I'm still stuck on the recommendation that we have at hand. Though, Madam Chair, unfortunately, I think we might be at 3-2 on this, not in favor, and that, that does concern me. It sounds like this is something staff really needs, so I guess I would just encourage continued deliberation of this.
Patty. I'm just frustrated that we had a revenue source, albeit earmarked for stormwater, but now we're taking another earmarked amount of money to move it, and so I'm extraordinarily frustrated. We voted to get rid of the stormwater thing. There was no plan, and although maybe in some people's mind, there was a plan, but that wasn't a transparent public plan, it was in people's minds, and so now we have to do this publicly and transparently. And I just sort of feel like, let's burn it down. What are our options? Do we need to raise our property taxes? Is that what we need to cover the shortfall? Then, then let's do it. Let's have those discussions in the budget special meetings. And I'm just frustrated. One earmarked fund, or this earmarked fund, but, oh, we can move this one around, even though it, because it frees up money, but by doing this, it was freeing up money. I'm just, I'm confused, and I'm frustrated, and I feel like maybe there were plans in people's minds, but that's not how transparent public discussion works. So let's go through our options in the public eye.
Yeah, so I, again, I'd just say, you know, with doing this in this order, I think just makes sense as far as planning, so we get to see what staff is actually presenting to us in a draft budget. I think, you know, we've had the question of fund balances, and I think, you know, collecting tax dollars and then locking them away for something that they're not being used for is not constructive either. And so I think what we talked about in all the stormwater discussions was the timeliness of this and being able to incorporate that decision with our budget discussions, and, you know, I think what's been presented seems to be part of that. So either way, I think we'll get a draft budget next, next week, you know, with, with the recommendations. I think, you know, the other thing that we discussed as part of moving forward was the stamp implementation, and so that plan that's coming to us. So I think, you know, all of those things were openly discussed, and, you know, I think staff bringing something to us isn't, you know, trying to, trying to kind of go around any transparency. I think they put it right here in the agenda, and so I think, I appreciate that, you know, so, so that's.
But this is the first time we've seen this, this suggestion.
And that's what she explained.
Absolutely, and so Supervisor Stevens, you know, I do apologize. I can understand how it feels like it's happening so fast. What I, what I would say is that I was really sensitive to the fact that the board may not have unanimous vote, and I did not want to put a menu of options that would be directly in conflict with one or more of a board member. If I put an option, for example, in front of the board that was in favor of repealing or not, so I held my recommendation to the end, as it was requested where I stood in my recommendation. And once the board took a vote, then, of course, I came back with the repeal to, you know, the ordinance to repeal the stormwater fee, and then also what this would look like for the developed, continued development of the fiscal year of 2025 budget. That said, you know, I'll say this, that if, while it is a pathway forward that's being recommended for the development of the proposed budget, it certainly will set up staff to be able to present a budget. It also speaks to our larger staff, that we are not in any more of a deficit than where we were before, as that has been something directly communicated to me. So I would say that that sentiment isn't far off from others, and so this proposed item is a way to get us stepping forward, because we know we're going to have those conversations about what a sustainable, long-term plan is to close the gap, because that was a conversation we've been having since 2022, since I've been your manager, which is, what are we going to do? Because our revenues are, you know, not exceed, our expenditures are exceeding our revenues. And then we did receive in the presentation from Stamp, the digital, or, excuse me, the printed hard copy shows, I believe, on page 64, Stamp is recommending a tax increase, and that, and they're also recommending, you know, that we had either simplify the stormwater ordinance or repeal it. So these are, these are the recommendations that have been presented to the board, and I think you're right on the mark, Supervisor Stevens. We do have to discuss a tax increase, and it will be part of the discussions moving forward. If this evening the board does not want to take action, I respect that. I strongly encourage that you do adopt it, so finance can continue presenting a budget that, you know, keeps, it just makes a little bit more sense, and it is in response to asking for what are some of the options. However, if you want to postpone what that looks like, that is, that is something that obviously you all can do, and we can have that discussion as part of the special meeting, and recognizing that we usually spend three to four hours just in reviewing of the operating budget. This was something that I wanted to put in front of you at the time of repealing the ordinance. But if you want to delay that to accommodate and discuss some of the other options that Supervisor Patterson's mentioned, I can respect that as well, so.
I'm comfortable either way, so.
I just wanted to add, it's not a you thing, it's a me thing. I, I can't wrap my head around some of these options, like, particularly when it comes to finances, et cetera, as quickly as everybody else here. And so when I first saw this, I was, I was shocked, to use Omari's words, because it had been the first time I saw it, and it was under unfinished business, and I, I never saw that before. And so I will trust staff on this, and, but I just, it felt like it came out of nowhere, and to see it under unfinished business was troubling, because it's the first time that I had heard it as part of a bigger plan.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that we're all getting, the manager has something else to?
No, I just wanted to say I completely understand how that, how that may have been, how that have came across, and I, I do apologize for that, as it may have felt like it was blindsiding you, so.
Okay, and then I just forget, if Mr. Heller had something else, we can go back around.
I was just going to say, Supervisor Stevens, I was in the same boat. I must have gone through this nine times, looking at the numbers and the resolutions, going, I don't get it. And when did I miss? Did I miss something? Did I fall asleep in a meeting that this is, you know, under unfinished? And truly, I was with you 100%. In fact, it took a call to another supervisor to say, I don't get it. I just had to take a call, I mean, make a call, because I really was confused on this whole thing, which is why I think I'd like to sit with it a little bit longer, to better understand, to make sure I do understand the ramifications, et cetera. I understand the need to go ahead and that we are in a deficit. We had done this, you know, we, I anticipated this in any discussions with the stormwater repealing there. We've talked about it before. There's enough money in the kitty, though, which is what this is about, to cover us for a little while. So I might, I think I'll be okay with this when we get to it, but I would like a little bit more time to sit with it. My final thoughts.
Others? So though we've had a public hearing, we don't need to take action, is that correct? Or do we need a motion?
If, it just depends on where you would like to go with it, Madam Chair. If you would like to hold the vote, that would determine if the, if the resolution is passed or not, that would, that would, or if you choose not to hold the hearing, you know, to have the vote, but a vote would help give us direction for this evening.
Yeah, that's my only question, is the technicality, yes.
Yeah, it can die right here.
Sorry?
It can die right here.
Yeah, I know, that's, yes, that's, I just wanted to confirm that. So, but if somebody cares to make a motion, we certainly can, but I was not getting that sentiment.
Just going to say, Madam Chair, you, you had some good remarks about the stamp program and such, and I just want to further add. We, we have great staff in the township that have obviously looked at this, provided their recommendations, and that's much appreciated, as well as even the professional consultation that we've had through the stamp program. So that was just my, my comments, you know, that I feel needed to be addressed.
I appreciate that. Okay, so I'm hearing no motion.
I, I would be willing to give a motion. Not really sure how that will go, but I want to give a stab if you want to entertain a motion.
I mean, I'm comfortable either way. If, you know, if you want to make a motion, you know, we can, we can vote on this now.
I'll move that the board of supervisors adopt the resolution not to reallocate funds to the Transportation Improvement Fund in accordance with Resolution 2021-37 for fiscal year 2025.
Let's see. And if there's, I'll second if there's no other second for purposes of discussion. Okay, and there's no other discussion, this will be a roll call vote.
Yes, this is a roll call vote for 2024-22. Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
No.
Mr. Heller?
I have a question. I'm, I have a question, I'm sorry. Will we see this again, though, at any point between now? I just want to make sure we'll see this again. Okay, no.
Yes, you will see it again.
Yeah, no.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
No.
Motion fails.
All right, thank you. Well, thanks, everybody, for the discussion, and we will continue that next week. All right, so we are back to new business item, what was two, authorization to submit an application to Center County for an allocation of county liquid fuels tax funds, and we'll go to Mr. Modrick for this item.
Good evening again. Every year, the county takes applications for funding projects through their liquid fuels program. Included within your packet is such an application. Included within your packet is such an application for funding assistance for next year. In particular, um, the request is for $50,000 to assist with the construction of ADA curb ramps associated with, uh, road paving or micro-surfacing, or, um, specifically 10 ramps that, um, were requested by a family with a, a blind individual, Bristol Avenue. You'll, you'll see these requests when we go over, when we go over the budget. But the, um, reason we've not submitted in the last year or two is we were the recipient of a previous grant for 50,000 for our TASA Transportation Alternatives Set Aside Program, um, the Pine Grove Mills Pedestrian and Bicycle Improvement Project. And so the county was waiting until we used those funds before they allocated us additional funds. So we will use those funds next year during construction. So, uh, this year I submitted another application. And so subject to your approval, uh, I will then forward that funding request to the county.
All right. Thank you. Now I'm going to ask the manager, I have an authorization to submit an application, but I also have a public hearing. So did we require a public hearing on this?
Thank you. So there, thank you for the opportunity to provide clarification. There had been a public hearing with a, um, expectation that a, a resolution would be provided. The last time the township submitted for the, these funds was in 2018 and Pindot had required a standard resolution. And after further looking into this, it appears that that resolution is not required for the submission to the county for this year. Therefore, the amendment was made that this is just authorization for the township to submit for the request for liquid fuel funds to, um, the commissioners, Center County Commissioners.
Okay.
So clarification is that it's not a public hearing, there's not a resolution. It's just to submit the funding request without the resolution this year.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Since that is the case, I will ask for a motion.
Madam Chair, Omari, I move that the, that we authorize staff to submit the application for funding assistance to the 2025 Center County Liquid Fuels Program.
This is Matt. I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Start with Omari made the motion, Matt. Any other comment? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right. We will move to a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania to acquire easements for Stream Bank Buffer Yard improvements to a tributary of Beaver Branch and Piney Ridge. And back to Mr. Modrick.
So there are six easements that are needed to move the, uh, this is an MS4 PRP project toward construction. And this is for the Beaver Branch Improvement Project. There is a resolution attached, um, to acquire the easements. The appraisals have been completed by Chris Allmiller. So one of the attachments includes the appraised values. Typically, the Public Works Director serves as the right of way representative. So I would, uh, send those, uh, letters of just compensation to the affected claimants and just kind of follow our standard process. And along with that is the, is what you see in front of you, uh, the resolution, uh, asking the board to authorize the acquisition of the easements and authorize the chair and secretary to sign the resolution. And also within, um, the document is the, you know, authority to move forward with, um, eminent domain in the event that we're not able to settle with, uh, any particular claimants.
All right. Thank you. And this is a public hearing. So I'll open the public hearing for comment on this item. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
This is Matt. I move that the Board of Supervisors authorize the acquisition of easements and authorize the chair and secretary to sign the resolution.
And this is Patty. I'll second.
All right. Discussion? Okay. Matt, yes.
Just a thank you to Mr. Modrick for sitting on, online for so long. No, no comments.
All right.
I took my jacket off.
All right. If there's no other comment, I'm not seeing any.
This is a resolution, or excuse me, a roll call for Resolution 2024-20. Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution passes unanimously.
All right. And we will move to discussion and authorization for advertisement of a public hearing on an amendment to Chapter 19 signs. And we will go to Christina Bassett, Community Planner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the August 20th Board of Supervisors regular meeting, the board did receive a draft amendment to Chapter 19 signs. After some discussion, the board did refer the signed ordinance back to Planning Commission with some additional questions with concerns over murals and temporary signs. Planning Commission reviewed, uh, the concerns provided and the signed ordinance at their September 9th workshop meeting. And with the board's questions and concerns outlined, they did address them. They provided a memo, uh, included in the agenda. And provided also in the agenda is the draft amendment to Chapter 19 as recommended by staff. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
All right. Thank you. And let's start with a motion.
This is Matt. I move that the Board of Supervisors move to authorize the advertisement for a public hearing to amend Chapter 19 signs.
And this is Patty. I'll second.
All right. Any comment or discussion?
Yeah, I apologize. I did not get to see that planning commission meeting, but what was the intent behind removal of this language?
The removal of the?
Yeah, strike throughs. Yeah, yeah.
So Planning Commission wanted to remove the regulations, as they don't see the need for them, based to be blunt. The murals, a mural is, uh, an exempt sign, which means it does not require a permit. So even with these regulations, it will never be reviewed by anyone. A mural is just permitted. So, but by putting these restrictions in there, it limits those that want to put up a mural. I guess you're law-abiding citizens. So it limits those that want to do it properly.
In their windows.
No, no.
Supervisor Patterson, I believe you're referring to the red line, um, as it relates to the striking language for windows and not murals. There is no red line striking text under murals.
Yeah. I misunderstood what you were looking at. Okay.
So it's just, so the window regulations have been taken out.
Temporary sign standards.
Temporary sign standards for windows, just to kind of ease.
There were three portions of sign ordinance that were looked at. I apologize. I was.
No problem. And then the, the renewal of the permit.
So yes, staff recommended removing the sign renewal, the annual fee. Um, we still require it when you get your initial sign permit. It's just very laborious administratively to follow up with the renewals. Not worth the fee.
Right.
Did that answer your question? Are you still?
Now I'm confused.
So on the Planning Commission's work plan for the year had been the signs, uh, the sign ordinance. And so they've brought this back a couple of times with their, um, results of their discussion. And so now before us, we have, um, what's been, uh, recommended to us is removal of the restrictions on those window signs. That will just kind of free up what businesses and different things to advertise in their windows. And then it will also eliminate that permit, uh, annual renewal requirement. So, um, yeah. So in accordance with their work plan for the year, they were tasked with reviewing this ordinance. They did that.
So windows sign would be anything from, uh, business displaying, you know, hours of operation, advertising, you know, the products inside. And they can be put up, taken down by the owners often. And it's hard to regulate for our zoning officer who regulates the sign ordinance. It's nearly impossible. And it, it can be very expensive for the business owner to get a permit for every individual sign that they may want to put up. So that's why we, that's why the zoning officer is recommending to remove the regulations for sign, window signs.
How many window permits have we been regulating?
I do not have the answer to that. I had to get back to you.
Other questions?
I have some related specifically to mural. And I don't know if this is the time to talk about them if we are, you know, preparing for a public hearing. But what I was curious about is if there was a way or if we should consider board approval before a mural is put up. Because I don't see an approval process for something like that. And I'm worried about something being maybe lewd, insidious, whatever, et cetera, and being called, you know, that might be offensive and just being put up as a mural without any approval towards that. That's my concern.
So right now, I'll kind of just respond. Oh, did you, there's no changes right now that's being made to the, to the section for murals. What would happen by default is they don't, uh, a property owner that would want to have that approval, they'd almost have to go through like a zoning, um, variance request.
So I guess that's my question is where, where's that? It just says a mural confirms the following type things. It doesn't lay out though that there's an approval process, but it's.
It has to be content neutral. So like the sign ordinance, uh, for example, is content neutral. We don't regulate what can or can't be in the sign, but the sign is of. It just, uh, has to conform to certain size standards. But it has to be content neutral, uh, in terms of review and in terms of the stipulations for it.
What, what does content neutral, neutral to who?
We, uh, we can't.
If you have to read it, you.
We can't regulate what the content of the sign or the mural is of. We don't have that, uh, police power.
I, okay. I'm just a little concerned.
We can only regulate the size, location.
So why can't we regulate or approve what's on a mural? Because we haven't created an ordinance or because we're not allowed to?
It would be a, uh, First Amendment, First Speech violation.
There, there was a Supreme Court that decided this.
Yeah. And that's, that's kind of where I'm getting at. But, you know, so that the public is aware then
Right.
of the potential here.
That was my thing. I sort of agreed with that. I understand that we can't say what they can do. But I thought there should be something in place, a process by which, um, other than not, not, uh, going to that business, um, not frequenting that business because you're offended by their mural, there should be another process in place whereby somebody can just use their power of saying, I don't like this. But I think we're getting into a discussion that's not here.
And you, you, you bring up a good concern. I've, I've, I've heard on the Planning Commission when they were first working on this, like what, what if it's this? And somebody's like, well, that's my sign. And, and unfortunately, I, I know, uh, I know a, a school district that had an issue with a sign, not, not, not to go too far off topic, but it had an issue with a sign across the street from the playground using the F word that their, really their only option was to build a fence blocking the sign from view of the playground because the property owner that put up the obscene thing was permitted to do so under the Supreme Court decision of content neutral.
Well, then if I may, those looking here, it says does not exceed 300 square feet. Theoretically, though, we could reduce that down to does not exceed five square feet unless approved by the board. That's still content neutral. You're restricting the size to say you can do whatever you want with five square feet. Anything else has to be approved.
Right. It would go to, it depends the sign ordinance at that point. It goes from mural to a sign where it reaches that size. And then it's regulated through the sign ordinance. Not, there's really.
It's an exempt sign.
Definition?
If you have the, the text.
Right. So for clarification, I would just want to direct the board for clarification back to Chapter 19, 107 exempt signs. There's currently no red line for changes for that section. And so if that's something that the board would want, I would just want to, you know, maybe give that further consideration. This evening, the board is asked to, to give consideration to the red line text. If you would like to advance that forward for public hearing. Um, and so there, this is actually in front of the board at this point because we received communication, you may recall, last year from the, um, Center County Republican Committee that then, of course, uh, the board referred to the Planning Commission to add in addition to their existing work plan or review of Chapter 19 sign ordinance to incorporate the concerns expressed in the letter to the township. And so while Planning Commission did give consideration to exempt signs, Chapter 19-107, there is not currently a recommendation on the side of staff, uh, for changes to that section of the sign ordinance.
Understood that we're only looking at that one component. I was just wondering if this is something that should have been rolled, should, could be rolled into the public hearing, but we can also address this at another time, specifically related to murals. So I'm good with, again, just, I guess, getting back to what the red line intent was.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other discussion?
Um, just a question about, uh, uh, do you have any idea of like what amount of fees were brought in by this sign thing?
It was tallied and I don't recall that number, but it was not a great amount.
Not significant.
I want to say about 16,000 a year.
It helps reduce some of the burden that's on the, the, the owner of the establishment. And it allows for a little bit more flexibility for them to be able to have these window sign, uh, signs without that, um, minimal fee. And it is, it is required, I believe, annually. So it reduces again that administrative burden and creates a little bit more flexibility. And that's being recommended by staff and Planning Commission.
I would know every sign a business has out front, on the wall, in the front, in the window, every sign requires a permit. So it could add up for an individual business.
Sure. And we're recommending that we remove that regulatory requirement.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I, I, I'd like a little bit more time with this. So, but, but I would just say that the understanding the, I think there were a number of things that I heard that were kind of being done by staff as it relates to these signs. Number one is the number of permits issued, the number of, uh, violations based on the, the signage, the amount of time that someone spends evaluating, invalidating the sign.
Well, a lot of it is tracking down the owners and getting them to pay the fee. There's a lot, so they don't pay the fee by the state and then they have to follow up with a, a letter, follow up again, you know, notice a violation.
That's standard practice of any fee, right? Any violation.
Yes. But with the sign renewals, it's significant, more significant than most other violations.
Couple.
Madam Chair, I would recommend that we table this item and we can provide responses to the questions that have been presented to staff when we follow up and have a discussion at a later time.
I mean, we have a motion to second. I, I say we move to a vote and maybe some of that information can get brought back to us when we have a public hearing and.
That sounds like.
Yeah. So, all right. We have a motion to second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
Nope.
All right. Communications to the board. Anything anyone needs to share?
Um, I just had one and I think I emailed you, manager, about it. And it was just, um, a resident that had some concerns about, um, the township, in particular Ferguson Township Police Department. And, um, is there any plan, um, for the upcoming election and any sort of security, um, plans? And that was it. I didn't know how to answer that. So.
All right. Thank you. All right, thank you.
It, it's interesting, because that was a topic of discussion during PML. Just understanding that there is a lot of angst going on heading into this election, just municipalities coming up with solutions and ways to just kind of cool those temperatures and allow level heads to move through to the election. I, you know, I think all of us here would be on board with just encouraging that level headedness and understanding, you know, we want people to participate in our democracy, but also, you know, want everyone to just remain calm and.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Good, all right, any other communications?
Had a few communications related to Rock Springs, as well as the stormwater fee. That's it.
All right. There's nothing else, there isn't, yes.
Just one thing, PML, just for everyone to know, I, there were a lot of really good discussions there. We are not in this alone.
Yes.
That was a big takeaway in talking to other municipalities, and some are, some are worse, and some are worser. So we're doing a pretty, pretty bang up job, as I'm hearing it from others. And congratulations to Madam Manager on her leadership position.
First Vice President.
All right, there are a number of calendar items. I'll note our two operating budget, special meetings, reviews of the draft operating budget are October 24th and 29th at 6:00 PM. And if there is nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And I'll second, and we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We are the Community Diversity Group. Our mission is to foster an inclusive and interactive community which attracts and retains a pool of potential employees and residents from underrepresented groups. We accomplish this in many ways, including sponsoring events like the Community Resource Fair, publishing a monthly resource flyer, and providing public training and educational and networking events. You can find us online at communitediversitygroup.com.
Did you know that CNET has over 30 years of program archives available to the public? For a requested donation of $20, you can receive a DVD or digital copy of any program in our library going back to 1988. The CNET archives include high school graduations and award nights, school district concerts and sporting events, school library write and illustrate your own book awards, Memorial Day in Wolfsburg, and the Central Pennsylvania Festival of the Arts, military history lectures, so-called roundtables, and many more. And don't forget about the meetings. We have an expansive archive of local government, as well as Belphon and State College area school board meetings. CNET has been covering the Center County community for over three decades, and we have the tape to prove it. Visit cnet1.org to browse our archives, and you can call or email us or order your own DVD or digital copy today. Nothing good on TV, but you're just not watching the right channels.